This program is brought to you by Newsworks in cooperation with the City of Eau Claire. This program is simulcast on WRFPLP 101.9 FM.
The legislature is pleased to divide the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the great majesty of the Father.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Anderson, Beaton, Bergy.
Here.
Christopherson.
Here.
Emanuel.
Here.
Greigert.
Here.
Kincaid.
Here.
Strobel.
Here.
Weld.
Here.
Worthman.
Here.
Jean.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk, and welcome everyone to the Monday, May 7, 2018 session of the Eau Claire City Council. During its Monday night session, the council conducts hearings and holds public discussions in preparation for our legislative session, which convenes in these chambers tomorrow afternoon at 4:00 PM. We welcome citizens who are joining us tonight and are grateful and give our thanks to Valley Media Works for recording this meeting for people who cannot attend in person. Viewers can find a recording or a streaming of the meeting at valleymediaworks.org. We do have important items on our agenda tonight, so we'll get right to it. We have a hearing and a public discussion, followed by a public discussion. Our first item is a hearing on an ordinance rezoning property located on the north and south sides of Normandale Drive from TR or temporary 1A to R2. Mr. Allen, welcome.
Thank you, Madam President, and members of the council. Again, before you, this evening is a request from Mr. Dennis Rao and several other property owners to rezone four properties near Normandale Drive from, or Normandale Road, excuse me, from TR 1A, which is a temporary residential zoning, or two, here on Normandale Drive. Show an aerial photo here, just a little better depiction of the area in question. These properties were annexed in the early 1990s, and at that time, when property is annexed into a city, it is designated with a temporary zoning classification. That is the case with these four properties as well. They are single-family in nature and looking to rezone to be consistent with the rest of the neighborhood, which is R2, which does allow some two-family. There is some two-family in the area. Look at our color-coded map here to show you. The hatched transparent parcels, that's the TR 1A as it currently stands. Orange is the R2, and yellow is the R1, the existing single-family residential. So with this, the Plan Commission does recommend approval of the request. They provided that on a vote of seven to zero at their meeting last week. Should add as well, the map you see here just gives you a good depiction of some of the other properties that are still under that temporary zoning classification. So with that, staff is going to reach out to the remaining property owners who have a temporary classification, have this discussion with Plan Commission last week, and with their direction as well and recommendation. We're going to go forward and be a little more proactive and reach out to them and see if we can get all those holes, as they were, filled in to make sure that we have permanent zoning rather than just temporary. The kind of the hiccup or hurdle with the temporary zoning is that property owner, for example, is unable to obtain a building permit until they have permanent zoning, and that was the issue here with Mr. Rao. He was looking to get a building permit for a storage shed, but was unable to do so because of the temporary classification. So with that, again, staff is going to make an effort to fill in the gaps, so you'll be seeing this property, these properties, this area, coming back before you here, hopefully sometime this summer. I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Questions from anybody? I see none tonight.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone here to speak about the poten- rezoning request? Anyone? Seeing no one, the chair will close the public hearing and open our public discussion tonight, which is a discussion of a plan to provide reduced bus fares for low-income people and directing the city manager to prepare an amendment to the schedule of fees and licenses establishing low-income transit fares. Mr. Winsens is the presenter.
Thank you, Council President Kincaid and City Council. Before you this evening is a presentation, followed by a discussion of a proposal to create low-income transit fares in the City of Eau Claire. Just by way of background, back in November 10 of 2017, the City Council approved the fee and license, or the schedule of fee and licenses, which included an increase in transit fares, which was effective on January 1 of 2018. On November 24, the City Council approved a resolution to evaluate the feasibility of establishing low-income transit fares and directed the city manager to prepare that report. On February 12, a draft report was presented to the City Council, and staff solicited feedback from the City Council on that report. Similarly, on February 21, the Transit Commission was also given the opportunity to provide feedback to staff on the proposal. In generating and evaluating the feasibility of establishing the low-income transit fares, staff consulted with a number of community partners, including Western Dairyland, Clearvision, the Aging and Disability Resource Center, Eau Claire County Human Services, the Eau Claire County Transit Commission, and then the Eau Claire City-County Health Department. These community partners were very valuable to us in establishing what benchmark to use for determining low-income riders and also working with us on how to verify the income eligibility of those riders in the, I guess, in the least intrusive manner possible. There'll be a slide later, but part of the reason in establishing the income threshold that we did was that it is a threshold used by a number of different programs, and therefore, if a family qualifies for, say, WIC, they would qualify for the low-income transit fare, and we wouldn't have to do another verification process. In our research, we only found one other community within the state of Wisconsin that had a low-income transit fare, that being the City of Madison. The City of Madison, on an annual basis, or on a monthly basis, excuse me, sets aside 225 passes for low-income riders. Those are awarded on a first-come, first-served basis. They charge $28 for that 31-day pass. Madison's transit system is significantly larger than that of Eau Claire, a lot of, many more trips within the Madison system. So if we were to adjust those 225 passes and to make, compare apples to apples for similar system sizes, that would equate to about 16 low-income passes per month for the City of Eau Claire. As I previously indicated, staff did work with our community partners in determining what income threshold to use for the low-income limit, and it was determined that we recommend using 185% of the federal poverty level. This is the same level used by a number of other programs, including WIC and Badger Care and the Free and Reduced Lunch Program. So if an individual or family qualifies for one of those programs, has a card, or we could use the agency to certify that the family is indeed income-eligible, that would be the end of the verification process. They wouldn't have to produce any additional, you know, income tax forms or W-2s or anything else in order to verify that income eligibility. The monthly income limits are in the table on the screen. They range from $1,859 per month for a family size of one, up to a little bit over $4,400 per month for a family size of five. Also, in evaluating the feasibility of implementing the low-income transit fares, we did a survey of our ridership. This was completed during the first week, first full week in January of 2018. Part of the reason we chose that week was that it was a time when people would be buying monthly passes. Based upon that survey, the riders, the survey respondents indicated that they ride the bus on average 6.7 times per week. The family composition of the riders is one and a half adults and .3 children. So many of the families that are riding are comprised of one or two-person households, some three-person households, and maybe some larger. Little bit over 66% of the riders would qualify as low-income based upon the guideline of 185% of the federal poverty level. Of those low-income riders, 45% pay the cash fare or the daily fare, and 39% use a monthly pass. The remainder might be using a pass issued by an agency or some other type of pass. And the low-income riders represent about 68% of all transit trips. So these sort of statistics and other things were very critical for us to use in evaluating what the cost impact of any proposal may be, because we really needed to estimate the population and the number of trips that we would be dealing with. The report that was distributed to the City Council presents three different options regarding fares. The first option would be simply no change, and that would leave in effect the fare increase that was approved January 1 of 2018 for all riders. One of the concerns that was expressed at that time was that the increased transit fares would lead to decreased ridership, and I think that, as staff, we did acknowledge that that would likely be the case, and I think we were even anticipating a slightly larger decrease in ridership than we've actually experienced through April. Through April, we've experienced a 5% decrease in ridership, but revenue is up 15.6% through that same period. So even though ridership is down, revenue is up. Another option that we consider in the report is what I'm calling a rollback of the increase, and this would just be for the low-income families again. This would basically eliminate the January 1, 2018 fare increase for the low-income riders. It does add an additional fare category, which administratively makes it a little bit more difficult for our bus drivers to administer, and it has a cost of approximately between $11,000 and $14,000 per year. The third option that we considered was establishing a low-income fare and a pass that would be, the rate would be set at half of the normal pass. This is essentially the same as we currently have in place for elderly and disabled individuals, where we're required to have a half-fare pass for them. This administratively is a little bit easier, because it's not establishing a new fare category. It's still a half-fare, would still be a half-fare pass, which we currently have for the elderly and disabled, but it does come with a revenue loss of between $63,000 and $84,000 per year. So this table just kind of lays out a summary of what these different options look like versus what the fares were in 2017 and also what they were changed to in 2018. So you can see with the low-income cash fare, that was, because we didn't have a separate category, that was increased from $1.50 per trip to $1.75 in 2018. Under that rollback option, it would go back to $1.50, and then, under the half-fare option, it would be set at 85 cents. Similarly, the low-income monthly pass in 2017 was $45. It was increased to $50 on January 1 of 2018. Under the rollback option, it would go back to $45, and under the half-fare option, it would go to $25. Some funding options to help offset the increase in the general fund subsidy that would result if the transit system experienced a loss of revenue from the low-income transit fares. One alternative would be to increase the full cash fare from $1.75 to $2. This would increase revenue by between $7,000 and $8,000 per year. Of course, it would mean a second increase in the span of two years to those riders who aren't low-income or elderly or disabled. Another alternative would be to increase the monthly pass from $50 to $60 per month. This would increase revenues by between $18,000 and $24,000 per year, but once again, this would result in a second increase in two years to those particular riders. Third option to make up for the loss of fare revenue would be to increase the transfer from the general fund to the transit system. Could be done in one of two ways. Could be done through increased revenues coming into the general fund. Each year, we're allowed to increase the tax levy by net new construction. We don't know what that number is going to be for 2019 at this point in time, but we could use a portion of those increased levy dollars to fund the increase in the general fund transfer. Alternatively, we could decrease expenditures within the general fund, and certainly mid-year, which is where we're at right now, we don't have the option to increase the tax levy, so we would likely be looking at decreased general fund expenditures in order to offset an increase in the subsidy or transfer to the transit system. And the last option would be fundraising or grants. This option was not recommended by either the Transit Commission or the City Council when they previously reviewed this request. It's very difficult to go out and fundraise or apply for grants on an annual basis. This is going to, you know, be something that would, fair revenue that would need to be made up on an annual basis, and so that would need to be a continual effort, and fundraising or grants are never a consistent source of revenue, and so there would, might be some uncertainty associated with whether or not we would be able to fund the low-income transit fares. So within the report, staff presents a recommendation. The recommendation of staff is to rollback the rate increase for low-income riders effective July 1 of 2018. We would need the time between now and then to establish the program and get the necessary documents and other things prepared in order to have it go into effect. For 2018, since it would be a mid-year change, we're estimating that the cost impact would be between $5,500 and $7,000, or half of the annual impact, and we are indicating that if the City Council chooses to go this route, we would suggest reducing the funding for the citizen training program contained within the city manager budget. That's a program that has not been implemented at this point in time, and we would suggest taking it from that pot of money. Also within the recommendations is that the city council, the city manager, would consider the half-fare option as part of the 2019 budget process, and he would consider that service modification along with all the other service modifications that are submitted, and that would allow him to evaluate that along with the other priorities, and we would then have the knowledge of what increase in tax levy is permissible under the levy limits and our net new construction numbers. The next steps, if the, depending upon the desire of the City Council, this, the resolution that's on the agenda for tomorrow evening would direct the City Council to prepare a resolution amending the schedule of fees and licenses. That's the mechanism that we would use to change the transit fares. Those are contained in the schedule of fees and licenses. Generally, it's a two-step process for the City Council to make changes to the fee and license schedule. There's usually a first reading or an introduction of that change, and then, two weeks later, is a public discussion and council action on the proposed change. So we would plan to bring that forward on May 22, and then, public discussion and action would occur on June 11 and June 12. So with that, I would be happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Mr. Winsens. Before we begin our questions, I'll just reinforce a council meeting habit we have, I guess, that we have affirmed amongst ourselves for quite some time, and it's based on the value that we use Monday nights to get to citizen input. That's the focus of Monday night, and for that reason, we have in the past and continue to try to reserve our questions of staff to two questions each, and then we try to move to the public input, but then there's plenty of time to come back and ask more questions after the public has had a chance to speak. We have found in the past that sometimes we got so involved in our questions that we made citizens wait an undue amount of time. And tonight, that's not as essential, because we do have a small citizen participation, but it's a good habit for us to be into, or for us to practice, and so I'll ask each of you to hold your questions to two each, and then we'll welcome citizen input, and then we'll come back if you still have questions. Okay. Teaching. Questions for Mr. Winsens. Councilmember Strobel.
Thank you. Mr. Winsens, you said staff recommendation was, I can't remember which one, rollback the increase. That's staff recommendation based on these options that you're presenting to us right now, correct? Because staff recommendation, when we adopted the fees, was to put forth the fee increase. Would that be fair?
That's a fair statement, and this is a staff recommendation based upon the direction of the City Council to establish a low-income transit fare. So if we're going to establish a low-income transit fare, this is our recommendation.
Thank you.
Councilmember Jean.
Thank you. I was wondering if the Plan Commissioners are getting involved with this, like, working with team up for approve this process?
The Plan Commission has not been involved in setting transit fares. The Transit Commission has been involved. They had representation on the Community Partner Group. In addition, they reviewed and commented on the draft report.
Okay, thank you.
Are there questions? Councilmember?
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Mr. Winsens. I have two questions. One is a little bit about the City of Madison, their reduced fares. Do you know a little bit more about their process, and specifically, how do people obtain one of the coveted passes every month?
I don't know what their, I'm going to assume that you're referring to what process do they use for income verification. I'm not familiar what their process is. You know, as far as the process of handing out the passes or, you know, to residents, I'm not sure. Mr. Transit Director may have some additional information on how that is handled, as he spoke directly to them. Do you have any additional information, Tom?
If I could clarify my question? My question is about the first-come, first-served. So how does first-come, first-served work?
My understanding is that there are two locations in Madison that, where the passes are distributed to, and that individuals come to those locations, and they are able to receive up to six passes in a year, and, or they're able to receive qualification for up to six months in a year by presenting their income statements, check stubs, or whatever they're going to use. I'm not exactly sure what they use, but they do need to be qualified every six months. And it's a first-come, first-served. They go to those locations to receive the pass, and they pay, they pay directly at those locations.
Thank you. And then I have a second question. In the resolution, it says that the city manager, that the council requests that the city manager considers for inclusion. I notice the language doesn't say the city council directs the city manager to include, so there's some nuances there, and I'm wondering if the city manager can talk about maybe how he envisions what that means.
Mr. Peters.
Certainly, thank you. As Mr. Winsens pointed out, we don't know what our revenues are going to be in 2019. We don't know what our expenses are going to be. We don't know what other priorities are going to present themselves. So, you know, this would be, you know, information from the council that says this is an important issue that you'd like considered, to the extent that there's a lot of other priorities. It's not uncommon for us in years past to have a million-dollar deficit that we have to fill, and, you know, we're cutting things and not adding things. Don't know that that will be the case this year because of the growth that we had last year, but it's basically telling the manager that this is an important issue for the council and that you'd like that to have serious consideration when the recommended budget is being brought forward in the fall. We will have requests from all of the different departments and operations, and, you know, this would be weighed out with all of those when putting together a balanced budget, which, of course, I'm required by statute to do.
Any further questions? Councilmember Greigert.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Mr. Winsens, for your report and your work on this and with the Transit Fair Committee as well. I understand that, you know, part of the picture of what we're looking at is the fact that ridership has gone down a little bit, and one of the areas that I noticed, serving on Transit Commission and looking at the report, was that K-12 students were, or saw about a third decrease in their ridership, and in this proposal, there's no direct implication for the K-12 student passes or the fare rates for them, is my understanding, and I guess my question is whether the committee or whether staff looked at the, creating a low-income approach for responding to the K-12 student needs.
Yeah, we did not look directly at the students specifically. However, if a K-12 student is a member of a family that is a low-income family, they would qualify for the low-income fare.
Okay.
Whatever that is at that particular time. So if we went with, ended up at the half-fare proposal, their fare would be 85 cents rather than, I think it's $1.25 for students. Under the rollback proposal, if you will, we didn't include it in the resolution. That certainly could be considered as an amendment for those low-income students to roll it back to what it was in 2017 as well, and that could be considered.
Okay, thank you.
What is the student fare right now?
It's $1.25, I believe, right now.
What was it last year?
$1.
Thank you. Councilmember Christopherson.
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Winsens, this is just for my better understanding. When the survey was conducted, the university ridership, was that tracked separately, or did you?
No, and in fact, the university riders don't play into this at all. We have a separate contract with the university that covers the ridership for UWEC students, so they don't pay a separate fare. They just show their ID, and they get on the bus for free.
So they're not included in these numbers at all?
No.
But that 5% decrease, we just assumed that that was fare-related?
You're right. The 5% decrease is for those fare categories that were affected by the fare increase. So that, again, that does not include the UWEC students in that number. If we do include the UWEC students or all riders of the transit system, I believe the ridership decrease is about 2.3%.
I'm sorry, would you just repeat that last?
Sure, absolutely. So the 5% number that I gave you was just riders for those fare categories. So the 5% number that I gave you was just riders for those fare categories where fares were increased January 1st of 2018. But if we include UW O'Clare students and CBTC students in the totals, the ridership decrease is about 2.3% overall. We've had an increase in ridership for UWEC students.
Thank you.
Okay, second question? Okay.
Thank you. So, Mr. Winzens, just one more question, and I don't know if you'll be able to answer this or not, but, so remember, the rate increase was like 25 cents, and it was the first rate increase we'd had in like nine years. And for those that are still riding, so not the 5% maybe that are not riding, did we get any feedback from those riders complaining about the fare increase, or, I mean, anecdotal maybe?
My understanding from Mr. Wagner, and please correct me if I'm wrong, we have received very little feedback regarding the fare increase. The only time we did receive some feedback was when we were discussing potentially a second increase for the passholders as part of the discussion back in February, and we got some negative feedback at that time about a second fare increase within a year, basically.
Councilmember Bergy.
Thank you. I just wanted to confirm that. So the team referenced in our packet said that what you would define, they would define low-income riders by 185% of the federal poverty level. And then in the recommendation by city staff, it didn't say how they were going to define low-income riders, but would it be the same if I assume that?
Yes, it would. It would be 185%.
Okay. Just wanted to, thank you.
Number Greggert.
Thank you, Council President. I have one more question kind of related to my earlier question, and I guess, did the committee consider K-12 students on their own, regardless of their parents' income to be low-income? Or how do you, I guess, determine the income level of a K-12 student?
Well, in most all of these programs, the income level is determined based upon the family. It's not based upon an individual. I'm most familiar with the Section 8 housing program. And again, you're determining it based upon the family or the people living in that household because everybody in that household contributes to that household income. At least, that's the theory. So you don't, you're not determining the income level for that K-12 student. You're determining it for their family. Most K-12 students don't have any income. But just to be clear, the committee did not really address the student issue at all. We were primarily focused with the committee on, you know, what is the income level that we should use? What is administratively, what are other programs using? What would be administratively easiest for us to administer? And would you, as community partners, help us in doing that income verification? So if somebody brought in a piece of paper to your office and said, "Will you verify that I'm income-eligible?", would you be able to search your WIC database, your database, and sign off if they are income-eligible?
Okay. Thank you.
Senator Whitman.
Thank you, Council President. Mr. Winzens, would we need to do a budget adjustment at all if we were to change the fee schedule?
The schedule of fee and licenses?
Yeah.
No, that in and of itself would not require a budget adjustment. But if we are, if we're increasing the general fund transfer to the transit system to make up for the lost revenue, that will require a budget adjustment.
Okay, thank you.
There, I see there are a couple of citizens here, and would invite you to come forward if you have comment on transit fares. It's not necessary, and maybe you don't, but now would be the time you could comment, if you wish. If you could begin by stating your name and your address for the public record.
Lee Hennig, 3150 Runway Avenue, Najong. Hello, councilmen and women. Congratulations to the new members. May your tenure be long and fruitful. I have asthma from service-related, so if I get short of breath, if you give me a second to use an inhaler, I appreciate it, ma'am. Thank you. It's very kind of you. You know, what happens to one of us happens to all of us. The role of government is to take care of the people that it serves. And increasing revenues is a necessary evil sometimes when we can't afford it. I've heard a lot of good data on why we have to, but I haven't heard about any talk about our vision for our future, or any talk about efficiencies that we can achieve in our bus system. I can cite three or four right off the top of my mind. I'm unsure of if we're going to natural gas for our fuel. If we are, great. If we aren't, we should be switching over, taking a look at the turnover cost versus the cost, the cheaper cost of natural gas versus gasoline. I've been studying four routes since this controversy came up. And most of the time, including the bus that comes through my neighborhood, there's less than 10 riders on it. And I suggest that a future efficiency could be, if anyone's rode the buses in O'Hare, the very small transit buses that go from airport terminal to terminal, we could put a counter, an electronic counter, on our present buses. This determines the rider and the date every time a person gets on. That could give your IT people an efficiency idea of when we could switch from small buses to large buses multiple times during the day. That's, if we go to the small buses, we can achieve an efficiency in initial cost, in transportation, gas fees, gas or natural gas fees. And the smaller vehicles are usually cheaper to maintain because they're less time-consuming, the parts are smaller. So that's two efficiencies. A third efficiency that we could look at is, we could hire a, spend a little money and hire an outside engineering team who specializes in time study. City, state, and federal governments usually are not as worried about employees as much as industry is. Industry is very efficient at having the right amount of employees for the job. From my cursory view at the management level in the Transportation Department, I suspect we're one-supervisor-heavy. I can't prove it to you. I don't have the data. It's what I could look at on the Internet. And you could prove that with a outside engineering study of the, if you have the right amount of people. Now, I'm not in favor of firing anybody. You let that person retire, or when someone retires in another administrative post, you allow them to cross-train and transfer. But the savings you could achieve, if you are administrative personnel-heavy, the savings you could achieve is 80, 100,000 plus. So these are just three or four ways, right away, that we could look at efficiencies for our future transportations and talk about it. We have spent $50 million or more improving our downtown. The Confluence Project, Haymarket Square, we're putting in, we're putting in fancy bricks at 300% of cost of concrete, fancy lighting at 200% of cost of normal lighting. We're trying to make this a destination, and it is. We're becoming a destination. We're attracting crowds. In the future, with all our social activities and events, our crowds are going to increase. Do we want, we don't have, you just built a parking ramp, but with what I see as a future, we don't have the availability for massive amounts of cars. We want people to use our busing system to transport large numbers of people to our events. We're not going to get it greener by having cars coming downtown. And if we can find a way to be efficient with our buses and actually lower our cost, am I done? If we're able to lower our cost for busing by going smaller buses on low-rider routes and other efficiencies, we can decrease our costs for everybody, and that'll solve the problem of our low-income riders. Yes, I stand by our low-income riders who are struggling to get by. The Democratic Party has given me information recently that O'Clare is a lower-income area in the state, and we're struggling a little bit. And I would like to find ways that everybody can win, that the city can lower their costs, we can have a vision of getting a little greener by having smaller buses and more gas efficiencies, and that's what I have to say. Thank you for your time. See you later. Shinji Dua.
Did councilmembers have questions of the gentleman?
Oh, sorry.
I didn't.
I apologize.
I'm a little off tonight, but I didn't tell you there might be questions, so I didn't want to.
I apologize. I don't know the process.
Yeah, it's fine. I think we do not have questions for you, but we have noted your input, and many of us took notes, and so thank you, Mr. Hennig. Anyone else here who wants to speak about this potential change in transit fares? We shall return then to questions from councilmembers. On Monday nights, we ask questions. It's not a time for discussion and debate, but if there are other questions for staff, Mr. Wagner, Mr. Winzens, Mr. Peters, Councilmember Christopherson.
Madam President, I do have just a question, and it could be addressed to any of the staff that knows. We, the conversation as far as supporting the transit seems to be at the fare level. And I'm wondering, what has our conversation been about increasing ridership?
Increasing ridership is a very complicated discussion. Certainly, certainly the goal of the transit system is to increase ridership. To do so is, at least to some extent, bucking a national trend. The national trend amongst similarly-sized transit systems is declining ridership at this point in time. We are going to be undergoing a five-year planning process this year, where we will be having an outside consultant come in and take a look at our transit system, take a look at our routes, survey our riders, look at opportunities to maybe adjust routes to try to increase ridership. So that is an activity that occurs every five years when we work on the transit development plan, so that will be occurring this year. But, yeah, I mean, those are some of the things that we're doing to try to increase ridership.
Thank you. Could I ask one more question? When we went to the agencies that serve low-income individuals that may or may not be using the buses, did we have any conversation about what motivates them to use public transit, or maybe they're not really using public transit?
Yeah, we really didn't have any discussion with them about motivation. I mean, certainly for, you know, for lower-income families, you know, having a reliable car is a major impediment for them. So using the transit system is a way for them to be able to get to where they need to go. Many don't have a car, so they do rely upon the transit system, or maybe they're not able to drive because of some sort of physical or mental impairment. So, I mean, there's a whole variety of reasons, and some people do our-choice riders, and they choose to use the transit system as their primary way of getting from point A to point B. So there are a whole variety of factors, but we really didn't talk to the community, or to our community partners about what motivates folks.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Emanuel.
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Winzens, I'm wondering if you can talk a little bit about the income verification process. So let's say that this is passed. Operationally, what does it look like?
Yeah. Well, all of the logistics haven't been worked out yet. But one of the reasons, I think as I indicated before, one of the benefits in using the same income definition as other programs is that we can use our partner agencies to help us verify income eligibility. And they would be able to do that with a, just a simple verification form that they could fax back into our office that says, you know, Jane Smith is income-eligible. They would review their database of income-eligibility. Dairyland, like Western Dairyland, runs a number of programs, so they have income information on a number of different families. Health Department has income information on those participating in the WIC program. County Human Services has information on people participating in Badger Care. So if they have that information, the individual, the family can, you know, can take a form to that agency. We could fax the form to that agency, or email it to the agency so that they can verify the income. If the individual has some sort of a card, they could come to the Transit Department, produce that card, and we would verify them as income-eligible. Now, the, you know, I guess the more-involved process will be for those who, for one reason or another, have chosen not to participate in any of those programs, in which case, then we would need to go through some sort of an income verification process as far as getting current paycheck stubs, or reviewing their most recent tax return in order to verify their eligibility.
I have a follow-up on that. Thank you very much for that. So it sounds like even if somebody is not participating on one of the programs that you mentioned, that the city would still create a mechanism of how to verify the income.
Absolutely.
So my understanding, in some of the programs, things like citizenship, if somebody has a previous record with law enforcement, drug use, and/or current employment status, that those, aside from income, could make or break their eligibility with those other partners, depending on other organizations' criteria. So even if somebody had some of these, didn't meet the qualifications for, let's say, Badger Care, the city of O'Clare could still verify income in a different way.
Yeah, and, you know, if they, if they met the income guidelines for Badger Care and entity was able to verify that they met the income guidelines, but for some reason they didn't qualify because of one of those other issues you mentioned, they could still verify, you know, if they had verified their income and they had that information, they could still verify their income eligibility. Otherwise, we would do it.
I see. Thank you. I see no further questions. The resolution is in our package tomorrow, as Mr. Winzens pointed out. I'm not sure what page it's on, but, and as the end of his report suggests, this resolution is amendable tomorrow also. But staff request that if you do have some ideas for amendments, that you work with staff in the morning, and that's turned out to be a very effective way for us to place amendments on our tables that are, that are, I don't mean to offend anyone, but that are well-written and thought-through a little bit. So if you read that last paragraph in the report, it does ask that if you're considering amendments, that you work with staff, I think, call Mr. Winzens, or, so through his desk. That does bring to an end our meeting for tonight, with no further public input and no further questions on a motion by Councilmember Strobel, second, and by Councilmember Emanuel. We adjourn without objection.
The O'Clare City Council meeting will return in a moment. Newsworks is made possible by continuing community support. If you would like to volunteer or make a donation, please contact us via phone at 715-839-5067, or online at valleymediaworks.org. This program is simulcast on WRFPLP 101.9 FM. We now return you to the O'Clare City Council meeting. We now return you to the Eau Claire City Council meeting.
Here.
Emanuel. Gregert.
Here.
Kincaid.
Here.
Strobel.
Here.
Weld.
Here.
Worthman.
Here.
Jean.
Here.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk, and now welcome everyone to the Tuesday, May 8, 2018 legislative session of the Eau Claire City Council. We welcome citizens who are joining us in chambers tonight and to those who are watching or streaming at valleymediaworks.org. Council does have important items on its agenda, so let us begin with our work. The first order of business is the consent agenda. Do council members have questions or wish to remove an item for separate consideration? On a motion then by Councilmember Strobel, second, and by Councilmember Weld, the consent agenda is moved and discussion is in order. And there being none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Bergy.
Aye.
Christopherson.
Aye.
Gregert.
Aye.
Kincaid.
Aye.
Strobel.
Aye.
Weld.
Aye.
Worthman.
Aye.
Jean.
Aye.
And the consent agenda is passed. That being passed, I have four proclamations this afternoon. And I'll begin by asking Chief Stanishevsky to meet me at the podium. Kathy's just gonna get up.
Okay.
You're okay if I add that a little bit?
Absolutely.
That's just for you later.
Okay.
Today, we have, one of our first proclamations, have the pleasure of recognizing the important work that our police force does today by commemorating Peace Officers Memorial Day. I'll begin with a proclamation that goes like this. Whereas the Congress and the President of the United States have designated May 15 as Peace Officers Memorial Day, and the week in which it falls as Police Week. The members of the law enforcement in the City of Eau Claire and in the Chippewa Valley play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the citizens of Eau Claire. And it is important that all citizens know and understand the problems, duties, and responsibilities of their police department, and that members of our police department recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder. And whereas each year, Police Week is an opportunity to honor these police officers who, through their courageous deeds, have lost their lives or have become disabled in the performance of their duties. And the Eau Claire Police Department has grown to be a modern and scientific law enforcement agency that unceasingly provides a vital public service, and in doing so, has established for themselves an enviable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and the security of all citizens. Now, therefore, the City Council calls upon all citizens of Eau Claire and upon all patriotic, civil, and educational organizations to observe the week of May 13 through the 19 as Police Week in the City of Eau Claire, and urges citizens to recognize Peace Officers Memorial Day on May 15. Chief.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I want to thank President Kincaid and the council body for this proclamation and also your support. In 1962, President John F. Kennedy signed a proclamation as well, designating May 15 as Peace Officers Memorial Day. So, during that week, that's a week of remembrance for those police officers who have lost their lives in the line of duty and their families that are associated with that. Police officers give a lot of sacrifice to provide safety and the well-being of residents in the City of Eau Claire. We've actually had two officers that have given the ultimate sacrifice, in Elmer Sundby and Bob Bolton-Mokley. Unfortunately, there's been 250 police officers throughout the state of Wisconsin that have given the ultimate sacrifice. My job as the chief of police is to do my best to provide the safety for our officers that's providing training and the tools necessary so that they're safe and make it home. Indirectly, you help me do that by approving those things in the budgets that I need to provide that training and the tools. So, I want to thank you for your support in the past and in the future, and as we, as currently, you provide that support. We do have a local ceremony of remembrance on May 16. That's next Wednesday at Florian Gardens at 10:00 AM. You're all welcome to attend, and I would encourage that, and it would be greatly appreciated. So, thank you for your support.
Second this afternoon, we are recognizing Emergency Medical Services Week, and I would ask Deputy Chief John Schultz to meet me. Hi.
How are you?
How are you?
Perfect, thanks.
We're going to spend a little time recognizing the fine work of all of our protective and public safety services on this day. Today, with this proclamation, we get to emphasize the work of the fire and rescue services with a proclamation that reads thus. Whereas, emergency medical services are vital to our community, and the members of the Eau Claire Fire and Rescue are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And access to quality emergency care significantly improves the survival and the recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. And whereas the members of the emergency medical service teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance the lifesaving skills, and citizens benefit daily from the knowledge and the skills of these highly-trained individuals. And whereas Eau Claire Fire and Rescue personnel visit area-grade schools, providing EMS and water safety education to over 1,500 4th and 5th grade students, and it is appropriate, therefore, to recognize the value and the accomplishments of emergency medical service providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week and by recognizing its theme this year, EMS, Stronger Together. A good theme. Now, therefore, the City Council does hereby proclaim the week of May 20 to the 26 as Emergency Medical Services Week and encourages our community to observe this week with appropriate programs. Deputy Chief.
Thank you much.
Thanks much, President Kincaid, rest of the council body. On behalf of the EMTs and paramedics with the Eau Claire Fire Department, as well as our local first responder agencies, we'd like to thank you for your continued support and recognition. Just a little bit about what we've been doing this year. We, through your support, we've been able to acquire some necessary pieces of equipment. As you can see up on the screen, we got, added a seventh ambulance to the fleet. That ambulance also has an automatic loading system in it where the paramedics don't have to actually lift the cot up into the ambulance anymore to load the patient. It actually does them for it. The other thing that we did receive this year was new cardiac monitors with the capability to send 12 lead data to the hospital for the docs to see while we're patient bedside, see if there's any abnormalities that the patient has, and we can start treatment from there, as well as move all that critical data into our ambulance report. Along the lines of risk reduction, we did meet with 4th graders again this year, and we do give them an EMS program as far as some basic first aid skills, and also when and when not to call 911, and we give them some examples on that. And then, for the 5th graders, we do meet with them, and we do go over a pretty substantial water safety program to keep them safe when they're out in the pool and the lakes and the rivers. So, once again, thanks a lot for your support. It is much appreciated by all of us, and best luck to you.
And to you. Welcome.
Thank you.
We do have people from, who helped with. Oh, sure, they can all come. Everyone can come up.
Wonderful.
You have a few logistic things here. Are you ready?
So, not too long ago, in my view, anyway, as we all started putting together informational slideshow, which shows my age, but it really helps people connect with the, just not reading the proclamation, and it helps get your message out, too. So, while I'm reading, there'll be a presentation, and then, of course, you're welcome to talk and say something.
So, with me here today is the, I'll let you introduce yourself.
Communications and Promotions Coordinator for Downtown Eau Claire.
Okay. Ms. Elizabeth Brodek. Welcome to Eau Claire.
Thank you.
So, I'll just read a little bit of an edited version. Gives people a chance to think about stuff. Ready?
The City of Eau Claire recognizes that investment in the creative economy development and the arts are important to the health and vibrancy of the community and its future. And the city appreciates that creative economy and development and community cultural engagement are directly related to economic vitality, education for the 21st century, engaged residents, and a community's future success. And the City of Eau Claire celebrates many impressive creative economy activities, projects, and initiatives, such as education programs at art centers, revitalizing initiatives, we've been doing a little one of those in our downtown, and civic engagement projects. The city recognizes the investment in the creative economy is critical for Wisconsin's success for these reasons. The arts mean business. The arts add to the community. The arts engage and drive tourism. The arts are an export industry and spark creativity and innovation. The arts have social impact. And therefore, it is my great pleasure to recog, oh, excuse me. On the, to me and the City Council, to recognize and engage citizens in the Creative Economy Week, which is proclaimed the week of May 12 through the 19.
Madam.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Council and President Kincaid. I want to take a moment to introduce some of the team who helped coordinate this week. Michelle Lean and Nick White with the Chippewa Valley Tours, Vicky Mulesky with Galidee Gallery, and Kenzie Havalek with Visit Eau Claire. Thank you again so much for this proclamation and the recognition of our healthy creative economy in Eau Claire. We are thrilled and honored to celebrate so much of what we love about this area next week. Celebrating the creative economy, May 12 through the 19, isn't just about what we enjoy in the community, it's about what makes it thrive. The economic impact of arts and cultural organizations and audiences alone totaled $10 million in direct economic activity in Eau Claire. It supports the equivalent of 393 full-time jobs and generates almost $8.75 million in household income to residents in Eau Claire, and almost 300,000 people attend arts and cultural events every year in this city. State and local governments see over $1 million in revenue generated annually by the creative economy as well. What's more, Eau Claire is becoming known as a creative mecca for, in tourism, recently having been recognized as one of the top 10 counties in the state for tourism, largely because of the, our arts and music-related economy. And thank you so much for Visit Eau Claire for putting that together. As Michael Seaman, Director of Creative Industries Policy and Research at the University of Colorado Denver, who will actually be giving a free keynote speech on Monday, has said about Eau Claire, "One of the great things about Eau Claire is that all of the ingredients are present, and in some cases abundant, as with music, for the city to continue emerging not only as a notable creative region within the state, but nationwide, and not every city has those ingredients. We are fortunate to have the support of leaders like you and the community as a whole to nurture and grow these ingredients. Hosting events like Creative Economy Week provide opportunities for city representatives, policymakers, business owners, creatives, and others to further develop creative economy activity." And equally important is that events like Creative Economy Week offer residents and visitors a chance to see what is already happening creatively within the city and the opportunities to participate in it in the future. So, this upcoming week, May 12 through the 19, includes 24 events over eight days and support more than 50 creatives in the making of that. It is a full variety of programming that touches various aspects of the creative economy, from dance to theater to music to education to food to entrepreneurialism. This week aims to connect producers and consumers of creativity in a more comprehensive way that personalizes the process. The creative economy would not develop or thrive without this mutual appreciation, and we greatly appreciate your support of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Last, we're going to recognize economic, the work of the, oh, the anniversary of the Economic Development Council with Mr. French and.
We've got a crew.
Sure, bring everybody. Hi, everybody. Welcome. I know all of you. So, with this proclamation, and Mr. French will be speaking for a minute after I'm done, we'll get our minds around Economic Development Week with these words. The International Economic Development Council is celebrating its 92nd anniversary in 2018. The Council provides leadership and excellence serving economic developers, all these people, with conferences, training courses, research, public policy advocacy, and professional certification designations. And the City of Eau Claire recognizes that economic developers, all these people, promote economic well-being and quality of life in our community, and help create, retain, and expand jobs that facilitate growth, enhance wealth, and provide a stable tax base. Economic developers stimulate and incubate entrepreneurs in order to help establish the next generation of new businesses. Therefore, I am very proud, on behalf of the entire City Council, to proclaim the week of May 7 through the 12 as Economic Development Week in the City of Eau Claire, and encourage citizens to recognize the importance of the profession of all these people in creating our vibrant city. Mr. French.
Thank you.
And remind us of your title.
Thank you. Ray French, Business Assistance Specialist with the City Economic Development Division. And I'd like everyone up here to introduce themselves to the council as well with your name and organization.
Absolutely, sir.
Christina Lawson with the Eau Claire Area EDC.
I'm Toby Lemahue, I'm the Fund Manager at the West Central Wisconsin Regional Planning Commission, specifically working with the Regional Business Fund.
Dave Minor, President and CEO for the Chamber.
Heather Smith, I'm the Regional Economic Development Director for the Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation, covering west central Wisconsin and located here in Eau Claire.
I am Scott Rogers with the Eau Claire Area Chamber of Commerce, where I'm the Governmental Affairs and Workforce Director.
I'm Mike Schatz, I'm the Economic Development Manager for the City of Eau Claire.
Thank you, thank you.
A powerhouse.
Yes, yes. Certainly, all of these partners are key in all of our economic development efforts. We want to take a moment to thank you for your commitment and support of economic development in Eau Claire, the investments you make every year in the city with our infrastructure, creating place in our parks and on our streets, a safe place, the quality of life that you promote throughout the city, and giving us, as economic developers, tools to do that good work, and specifically, and most recently, with the new loan programs you approved. This week, we've got a number of great events prepared by many people up here with me. Through these partnerships, we have the 1 Million Cups Networking Event, the Eau Claire Chamber of Commerce's 6-Annual Working Mothers Luncheon, Musky Tank Mix. Mix are another great networking opportunity. We have a... speaking of our loan programs, we have a loan luncheon learn for all of the loan programs in the Eau Claire area on Thursday at the French Press at noon, and then the Chippewa Valley Job Fair and Business Plan Basics at the Western Geri Land Business Centers. So all of these programs and all of these partners go for helping create a wonderful economic culture and community that we have here. Thank you. And then one last major announcement. The City of Eau Claire's economic development website has a soft launch currently and live right now at www.eauclairedevelopment.com. So check it out and send us your feedback, and we look forward to presenting great information and tools through that website. So thank you very much.
Okay, we will continue our work this afternoon and with... by opening up our business agenda, which begins with item number 14. Right down to some serious work here with a resolution granting a temporary Class B fermented beverage and temporary Class B wine license to UW Eau Claire Alumni Association for a event at the Pablo Center at the Confluence on May 14th. Ms. Strumberger?
Thank you. So this is an application for a temporary Class B license, which is a type of license that authorizes the sale of beer or wine, just on a temporary basis. And that license is only available to certain types of entities, you know, groups like churches or clubs or chambers of commerce. Those are the only types of groups that are able to qualify for this type of license. And it's usually just a one-day event license, and we always ask that certain precautions are in place to prevent underage drinking, overconsumption, and other alcohol-related concerns. So you'll see all those elements in this application before you. So this application is for an event on May 14th at the still under construction Pablo Center at the Confluence. It's part of the Chamber Business After Hours series. It is an invitation-only or chamber member event. It'll be open only to those 21 or older, and IDs will be checked at the door by licensed bartenders. It is an unfinished space and an active construction site, so it is subject to all the requirements of our building inspections and fire department prior to the event. And the applicant is here and will speak to the event if that's something the council would like.
Thank you, Ms. Strumberger. Any questions? I don't see a need for the applicant to speak, but thank you so much.
Thanks.
On a motion then by Councilmember Jeong, seconded by Councilmember Worthman, item 14 is moved and discussion is in order. And there being none, clerk please call the roll.
Councilmember Christopherson?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
Kinkade?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Jeong?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye. And that resolution passes.
Item 15 is a resolution approving the 2018 Community Development, or CDBG, and home grant funding appropriations. Mr. Jonathan has a presentation for us, an item that we've seen on our agenda before, but now we're at the decision-making point. Mr. Jonathan?
Good afternoon. I just wanted to reiterate our process. We start our annual plan process at the end of January with publication of our ad in the Leader Telegram soliciting applications for projects to be funded by the block grant and home programs. The applications are due back at the beginning of March. We offer technical assistance meetings to assist with the preparation of those applications. We start preparing our plan with the publishing of our 30-day notice in the Leader Telegram. Our first public hearing was with council on the 9th of April. We hold several public hearings during the period to solicit comments from the public. We then bring the budget back to city council for approval today. Since I last came before you, the final head allocations were announced. Eau Claire will receive $552,433 for community development block grant and $411,026 in home funding. With this additional funding, we will be able to fund those agencies that applied with full or very close to full funding. I'll answer any questions.
Questions for Mr. Jonathan? Councilmember Emanuel?
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Mr. Jonathan, for that. Wondering if you can advise on the allocation for the community table?
At the public hearing, the young lady that spoke was... she wanted additional funding. She wanted us to fund her in total. She was supposed to send some emails either to you or city manager. I never received anything, and nobody ever contacted me and said that she said anything. So her funding, she didn't... while she didn't get what she asked for, she was bumped up due to the increase that we got in block grant funding.
May I ask a follow-up? Thank you for that. Can you confirm if the bump up was completing the totality of the request or partial?
Let me just pull this up. While they asked for $15,000, we were able to fund them with $10,000.
Thank you.
Further questions for Mr. Jonathan? I see not. And thank you for your work again this year.
So...
And to all the agencies who went through the application process. Thank you. And on a motion by Councilmember Gregert, seconded by Councilmember Bergy, item 15 is moved and discussion is in order. There being none, or Councilmember Emanuel?
Thank you, Madam President. I would be interested in a motion, unless anybody else wants to have discussion first, but I would like to make a motion. Looks like that's okay. I would like to move $5,000 from... let me get the correct title of it. It's essentially the City of Eau Claire, the Historic Preservation Fund. I'd like to move $5,000 from there to adding... to allocate $15,000 to the community table. And if I can have a second or I can speak a little bit more about that.
A motion has been offered to... I'm not sure if it's reallocate $5,000 from the Historic Preservation Fund to the community table. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilmember Worthman. Councilmember Emanuel, to your motion?
Thank you, Madam President. The reason why I'd like to do that is I think that's community tables serve so many people in need in our community, and I think $5,000 certainly can go a long way. For every dollar that they invest with the food pantry, they are able to turn that into $10 worth of food, the last I was aware of. And so really $5,000 then becomes, oh, $50,000. I hope that's correct, easy math. So I think they're worthy of that, and I did email the city manager and appreciate staff who was able to get back to me and advise that historically, this fund with the city and the Historic Preservation Fund has been underspent. They have two years, up to two years, to spend those funds, so...
Two years to commit, five years to spend, sorry.
Oh, thank you. But nonetheless, I think the takeaway is that it's a historically underspent fund, and they'll still receive some funding, but the community table would get the full allocation of that fund.
May I address?
Certainly, Mr. Jonathan.
Councilman Emanuel. Unfortunately, because the community table is a public service, we are bound by a 20% cap. And with all the public services who have been funded, the 20% cap has been met. We can't apply any money outside of public services to community table. That allocation would have to be adjusted within the public service category, unfortunately.
You'll have to amend your motion.
If I may. Thank you for that. Well, unless somebody has a better idea, I wasn't aware of that. So I think probably withdraw it unless somebody else has a different way of how to address it. So I'll withdraw it, and somebody else can make a motion.
The motioner withdraws her motion. Further discussion on the resolution?
I have a question.
I just have a question for Mr. Jonathan. Just so I understand it, essentially, that's a federal regulation in terms of...
Yes, it is.
That there's these different buckets that the money has to stay within?
Yes. Public services is a 20% cap. Planning and administration for CEBG is a 20% cap. And in home administration is a 10% cap.
I know a few years ago, we had... or we actually almost every year have some carryover from our housing rehabilitation program. Is that within the same fund as the community table, or no?
Generally, we don't have any reallocations in public services. Any funding that is provided or that is reallocated comes from one of the other projects outside of public services.
Okay, because I remember we had sold some properties, or things like that will come along where we'll sell properties or there'll be carryover year to year.
Right.
You don't foresee that happening?
I don't foresee that happening. And that funding doesn't go to... well, that could go... 20% of that funding that we receive would go to planning and admin cap and also to public services cap.
Okay. Thank you.
And further discussion? Councilmember Emanuel?
Thank you, Madam President. Wondering if there's any other stone that staff could advise that I look under that would get at the spirit of what I was trying to achieve with the previous motion?
Mr. Jonathan?
Sure. I totally understand where you're coming from with community table. They are a worthwhile organization and provide a very important service to our community, as do the other community service applicants. But because of that 20% cap, we're very limited. And with as many applications as we get, we try to fund all of them, and we try to be fair based on their ask, to give them as much as they've requested or very close to it. At this point, I don't know if there's anything else we can... if they weren't a public service, there'd be plenty we could do. But I don't think that there's anything we can do with public services.
And further discussion? Thank you, Mr. Jonathan.
Sure.
We are back to the motion as moved and without amendment. And there being no... Councilmember Emanuel?
Thank you, Madam President. I don't have any other amendments other than to keep the discussion alive around how the city chooses to allocate these very important and precious funds. I think it's important to build in some metrics to make sure that there's the highest impact possible with these funds and how they're allocated, and then the impact to the community. The council has talked about this, I think in the last few years, in a public session such as this, of wanting to see that additional metrics could be in place. And so I would implore us as a body to think about how can we address that in a meaningful way.
And there being no further discussion, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Emanuel?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
Kinkade?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Jeong?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
And that resolution passes. Item 16 is a resolution accepting and appropriating a site assessment grant from the Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation for the former, I think it's Fabic CAT property located at 1211 Menominee Street. Mr. Winsens?
Thank you, Council President Kinkade, members of the city council. Before you this afternoon is a resolution accepting and appropriating a site assessment grant from the Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation for the former Fabic CAT property located at 1211 Menominee Street. The City of Eau Claire and Blue Gold Real Estate partnered in an application to the Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation for a site assessment grant to do soil testing and groundwater testing at the former Fabic CAT property. This property is part of the proposed Sonntag Event Center that Blue Gold Real Estate is planning to develop on Menominee... on Menominee Street. The total grant award from WEDC is $34,000, and it does have a 50% match requirement. The 50% match requirement of $17,230 will be coming from Blue Gold Real Estate. The resolution also authorizes the city manager to enter into a sub-recipient agreement with Blue Gold Real Estate where they will be required to provide that match and meet the other terms and conditions of the grant agreement. Because this resolution does appropriate funds, a two-thirds vote or eight affirmative votes of the body is required for adoption.
Questions for Mr. Winsens? Councilmember Strobel?
Thank you, Mr. Winsens. Just to confirm, the city's a facilitator of this, and money comes from the EDC, and then the matching comes from the university, and there's no funds coming from the city on this, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
And there being no further questions? Thank you, Mr. Winsens. And on a motion by Councilmember Christopherson, seconded by Councilmember Strobel, item 16 is moved and discussion is in order. There being none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Gregert?
Aye.
Kinkade?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Jeong?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye. And that resolution passes. Item 17 is a resolution granting a permanent encroachment
to Brent Douglas Flowers along the 600 block of South Barstow. Mr. Solberg?
Good afternoon.
Afternoon.
The resolution before you would grant to Brent Douglas Flowers a permanent encroachment. It's labeled a permanent encroachment, but it would be in effect from May 9th tomorrow through November 1st of this year for planters similar to these to be located in the 600 block of Barstow Street. Here's some additional planters. For the growing of legumes and flowers, Brent Douglas did receive a grant for downtown enhancement from Downtown Eau Claire Incorporated for $2,000 to construct these. What they're planning to do is install them with requirements that are similar to what we have for the Sculpture Tour, and a list of the requirements are contained in your council packet. Basically putting them in the boulevard area, the area between the sidewalk and the curb and gutter to grow vegetables that would be available for the public if they so choose. And then at harvest time, any remaining vegetables on these would be given to the Beacon House or the Sojourner House that are in the adjacent area. The requirements for the encroachment also includes insurance and indemnification for the city and would take effect as soon as granted. If there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer any.
Councilmember Strobel?
Thank you. So the encroachments for 90 days, and it looks like they're movable, like some of them, it says have wheels on them. Will they be removed in the wintertime, or will these be anchored in?
They'll be... the wheels that you see here have brakes on those. So once they're harvested, they'll be removed. So after November 1st, their encroachment, even though it says permanent, it's a temporary permanent, like Sculpture Tour started. So they would be removed so they don't get in the way of a snow removal. And similar to the Sculpture Tour, if it's a success, we'll revisit it again next year.
Thank you.
And I see no further questions. Oh, Councilmember Bergy?
I was wondering, in the packet, it said for the upkeep, that there'd be a number of people would be upkeeping it. Do you know... it didn't get very specific, but...
What they're hoping are some of the residents of, like the Sojourner House and the Beacon House would be able to plant if they would like weed, harvest. If there's any kind of cost implied maintenance, if there is a roller that needed to be removed, that would probably... that would probably be the responsibility of Brent Douglas then to make sure the planters are upkept. But this is meant to soften the streetscape in the area and be something that the people that frequent that area would be able to participate in jointly, like a community garden type thing.
Okay, thank you.
I serve on the DEKI board and as a condition of winning this grant, he did present quite a plan for shared maintenance and kind of a little bit of scaled down of, a little bit of community gardening, but really in a scaled down way. He has the right details in place here.
Council, okay, I see no further questions. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Solberg. And on a motion by Councilmember Christopherson, seconded by Councilmember Strobel, am I right? Yeah. Item 16 is moved. Discussion? Oh, sorry. I'm on the wrong thing. We're around to a motion by Councilmember Emanuel, seconded by Councilmember Weld. Item 17 is moved. Moved right through 16, so. Discussion. And there being none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Kincaid?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Greggert?
Aye.
And that resolution passes. Item 18 is a resolution approving a certified survey map for a right-of-way dedication at 202 Mount Washington Avenue. Mr. Allen?
Good afternoon, Madam President, members of the council.
Good afternoon.
Before you this afternoon is a certified survey map, resolution thereof, which provides also for right-of-way dedication, which is why this is before you this afternoon. Normally, CSMs, Certified Survey Maps, would not be brought before Plan Commission or City Council. But in this case, because there's right-of-way dedication, that is the primary purpose for bringing this before you this afternoon. It is the area identified, kind of northwest corner, it's a strip here. It is six inches wide by 175 feet long, so it is not quite 88 square feet. But it does help, it is part of the overall kind of reconfiguration of right-of-way all along Mount Washington Avenue. You can see here's some of the new pin placements that were made as part of surveying that was done in conjunction with city assistance and therefore, again, making some cleanup along this area, all of Mount Washington Avenue. And this is the last piece before you this afternoon. Stand for your questions.
Questions for Mr. Allen? Looks like we have none.
Aye, thank you.
And on a motion by Councilmember Jean, seconded by Councilmember Worthman, item 18 is moved. Any discussion? And there being none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Strobel?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Greggert?
Aye.
Kincaid?
Aye.
And that resolution passes. Item 19 is a resolution approving a memorandum of understanding between the city and the Chippewa Valley Pickleball Club. Mr. Pippinger?
Good afternoon.
Afternoon.
Before the City Council is a memorandum of understanding by and between the City of Eau Claire and the Chippewa Valley Pickleball Club. This MOU is for the Chippewa Valley Pickleball Club to fundraise and for the construction of several new amenities at McDonough Park. These amenities include surface repair of older pickleball courts, the addition of a multi-colored textured surfaces of the courts, additional benches and a fourth door to the new courts, access to electrical and drinking water adjacent to the courts, purchase of an AED for the park, security cameras and safety lighting, purchase of a porta potty with a location adjacent to the courts, a second pavilion and storage building, and creating an active aging theme adjacent to the courts. The Chippewa Valley Pickleball Group will be required to fundraise for the entire cost of the project in cash before the city will commence any construction of the project. This MOU includes the responsibilities of the city, the Chippewa Valley Pickleball Group, the improvements, ownership of the amenities once the projects are completed. The Department of Community Services finds that this partnership will be beneficial to the parties as a whole by creating new amenities within the park. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions for Mr. Pippinger? The chair just has one about the lighting. Given a history in the neighborhood, the lighting will be managed properly?
It will be for security lighting. It won't be anything that will light the courts.
So come on with motion?
It'll still be during the daytime hours, so the light hours.
Okay. Thank you for that. And I see no further questions. Thank you. On a motion by Councilmember Greggert, seconded by Councilmember Bergy, item 19 is moved and in discussion. And there being none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Greggert?
Aye.
Kincaid?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
And that resolution passes. Item 20 is a resolution accepting the plan to provide reduced bus fares for people experiencing a low income and directing the city manager to prepare an amendment to the schedule of fees and licenses, establishing fares for people experiencing low income. Mr. Winsens has a follow-up to some of our questions and comments from last evening. Mr. Winsens?
Thank you, Council President Kincaid. Just very briefly, one point of clarification. Last evening, Councilmember Worthman asked a question regarding whether or not an appropriation would be required in order to, really in order to implement the resolution. And I believe that I answered that an appropriation was not required or two-thirds vote would not be required in order to amend the fee and license schedule. However, I do want to make clear that in addition to amending the fee and license schedule, we'll also need to make an appropriation to increase the subsidy to the transit system if we reduce the fares. So that two-thirds vote will be required to make that appropriation. We'll include that appropriation language in the same resolution, amending the fee and license schedule, but a two-thirds vote will be required for that. So I just wanted to make sure that that was, that that was clear for members of the City Council.
That's not action on our agenda tonight?
No, that does not pertain to the resolution on the agenda for tonight. It would pertain to the follow-up resolution in two weeks if the resolution on tonight's agenda passes.
Questions about that? Councilmember Emanuel?
Thank you, Madam President. I don't have a question necessarily about that. I do have a question about identifying underspent funds. I guess I'm, maybe if I would be allowed to make a couple brief statements that would make my inquiry a little bit, it would make a little bit more sense. Okay, thank you. So if this passes tonight and in two weeks, I would be interested in looking at additional funds to perhaps broaden the impact. So my question is, can, is it possible to get a copy of any underspent funds from 2012 to 2017 that would be eligible to fund transit rides? So basically looking at a historic tracking of underspent funds for the last five years and if council decided to move them, that those funds would be eligible for transit rides. Is that something that we could request from staff?
Mr. Peters?
Certainly, we will produce any information that you request or that you ask. My comment would be that typically, looking at underspent, you know, funds on a line-by-line budget would not be the way that we would recommend approaching, looking for funding. We expect our managers actually to always come in under budget. And the money that is under budget at the end of the year is used as one-time money to roll over to fund our capital improvement plan. So, you know, to be looking at essentially an unfund, or a line item to say it was underfunded and then to use that, you know, to fund something else would be a very different philosophical approach to budgeting than we have used in the past. And frankly, would send a message to staff that, you know, they shouldn't leave anything on the table or leave anything unfunded because it would be then open to use something. Again, we budget in a way that we expect our managers to come under budget. We expect them to spend only the money that they need to accomplish what they have to do for the year and also have the flexibility to adapt to or respond to things that come up unexpectedly in the year. So you will see variation from year to year and, you know, budget to budget with the idea that they only spend what they need so that, and have the flexibility for the future. But we can certainly, you know, do that now or as part of the budget process to the extent you do see at the end of the year, every year, how budgets are and, you know, which items come under budget. But to the extent that you're looking for something specific for this, we, short answer is yes, we can produce whatever information you're looking for.
Further questions about the resolution? As is our custom, then, there being no further questions, we move around the table. And so this motion would be moved by Councilmember Christopherson and seconded by Councilmember And without objection, that moves the item to the floor, seconded by Councilmember Emanuel. So the item is moved and is open for discussion. Councilmember Emanuel?
Thank you, Madam President. I have a resolution that I would like to offer, if the body would be okay with that, to start our conversation. I'll speak to it. It's basically making a language change, moving it to people-first language. So currently, the resolution reads things such as low-income people, low-income families, low-income individuals. And in the places where people were mentioned, my resolution moves the language to say, put the people first, the word people or person first, and it's people who are experiencing low income, et cetera. So everything else in the substitute resolution is exactly the same, just changes the narrative so that we're putting people first in the discussion versus maybe one indicator about their identity. So, I do. Yep. So that's my motion.
I'll second.
A motion offers a substitute resolution, seconded by Councilmember Worthman. Once we get a chance to look at the resolution...
Madam President?
Just one second. I don't see the wording change in the substitute resolution. There's one sentence in the bold introductory paragraph, "for people experiencing low income." That's the res, that's it? Madam?
May I? I do believe there's multiple changes within the document, probably at least four. And if it's okay, I have an extra copy that I would like to request is put up on the screen for anybody at home or people here in the public to view, if that would be permitted.
The, so even though we only see the people experiencing low income, it is filtered throughout the rest of the report, your resolution?
If I may? This is, I asked for a substitute resolution for the resolution only. I did not request changes to the report. That seemed to be, this is what we're voting on and that's getting at the spirit. Bonus points if the report was changed, but really the meat of it is looking at the resolution.
Okay. And now that I've had a minute, I do see that there are wording changes in other wherethes. And maybe Councilmember Strobel can stick that up on the monitor for us. Now that we've moved the original resolution, we only need adopt the substitute resolution and then it stands as the resolution from which we would discuss. Any discussion on the substitute resolution? Councilmember Emanuel? Is your light still on? Councilmember Emanuel?
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you to the city manager and staff for helping to create this substitute resolution. This has been something in the back of my mind for a long time about language and language choices that is used in public policy. And yesterday, as I was reviewing it, every time I saw low-income people, low-income family, low-income individual, it just really struck me that the language could be simply changed to be a little bit more modern and inclusive. And I think that's really important is that we use inclusive language and we view all people as people first versus one part of their identity. So today, this is a substitute resolution for this. And I would also say that I have communicated with the city manager already that I would like to look at, how can we improve some of our language as we move forward in other public policy? For example, maybe we say somebody, a person with a disability versus saying disabled person. And people-first language is commonly used in many areas and I think it's an appropriate modernization change to make here in Eau Claire. So I hope you'll consider supporting this.
Councilmember Weld?
Thank you, Council President. I would be in support of the substitute resolution. I, you know, as often as I've talked about this subject and always constantly using that phrase, low income first, it is uncomfortable and awkward and oftentimes feels labeling to a certain degree of a certain person or group. So I have no objection to the new resolution.
Councilmember Bergy?
I'd like to agree with Councilmember Emanuel and Councilmember Weld. In my profession of being a counselor, the mental health, this is pretty standard care. So I think a lot of people are moving this way and a lot of professions and we just kind of join that flow. So I agree.
And Councilmember Worthman?
If I could suggest a friendly amendment that in the second whereas, families follow the word people. So it would be for people and families experiencing low income, because right now, families comes after.
That change is made? Further discussion? There being none, clerk, please call the roll.
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Greggert?
Aye.
Kincaid?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
And that resolution passes. So now, further discussion? So now further discussion is subject the subject of further discussion is the substitute resolution before us and further discussion is in order. Councilmember Weld?
Thank you, Council President. Again, a big thank you to the staff for all their work on this project and the time that has been spent with the different committees and various social service groups. I guess I am in support of the staff's recommendation in this resolution. I think it's important that we at least keep moving forward of this with this idea. Even though it's a rollback to only where we were, I think it's a step in the right direction. It also gives us an opportunity to make sure that we do it correctly, that we don't leave anyone behind and no one's forgotten and that the process can be worked on and worked out over the next six months. It also gives us then a chance as a collective body to discuss this in the future in our budget sessions. We're all going to have different wants and needs and we're going to need to justify those. And I think it gives everyone a fair chance at that. So I feel that this is appropriate and at least accomplishes what we had set out back in November when this was first proposed.
Thank you, Councilmember Weld. The chair offers herself an opportunity to issue an apology. I forgot to recognize that indeed Councilmember Weld and Councilmember Mitchell birthed this idea and set this task force to work. And I apologize that I didn't recognize that. And you should have been the mover of the original resolution and I apologize. And I do recognize that not only did you have this idea, but you followed through and did real work on it. So sorry about that. Further discussion then? Councilmember Greggert?
Thank you, Council President. Really enjoyed the opportunity to elevate this issue in our community here through this resolution and through the work of the committee and the work of our city staff. And I've been in touch a bit with city staff today, trying to work through some of the, you know, some of the aspects where making sure we're capturing the full goal of, you know, including increasing access to our transit system through the fare structure. One of the areas that I asked about yesterday and I've been in touch with folks in the community about a bit is the K through 12 students. And we are seeing significant declines in the ridership over the last three months. And it could be partly because of the fare increase. It could be because of other factors like school schedules changing and there could be a number of other factors involved. But it's something that requires me to pay attention. And, you know, I know that there wasn't anyone directly necessarily representing schools or youth on the Transit Fair Committee necessarily. So I think there is an opportunity to, you know, as a previous member mentioned, you know, there this resolution allows us to continue the conversation and look at exactly where we can make changes. I do have a an amendment that I'd like to move to the floor that would help emphasize the work I think we still need to do with K through 12 students and making sure that we're recognizing that they don't necessarily have an income coming in. And oftentimes, a family will experience a low-income situation, especially while in school. And we'd really like to find ways to increase our ridership among families. So I would like to distribute that to council members and also request to have it put on the screen. It's just a additional, be it further resolved clause that would be added to the end of So I can kind of outline what it is. Certainly, once I can read it in the meantime before it gets up on the screen there. Now therefore, be it further resolved by the City Council of the City of Eau Claire, that the City Council requests the city manager to work with youth-serving, educational and civic organizations to explore reducing K through 12 student fares to zero and funding this goal in partnership with the city beginning January 1, 2019. Report back to the City Council by August 21, 2018 and consider this inclusion in the recommendate recommended 2019 budget along with any other requested service modifications. So essentially, it adds on to the to the work a bit here. There is a similar, be it further resolved clause in the resolution referring to going to half fare as a reduced fare option. And I think this helps capture and elevate the conversation and reaching out to various folks that would have some insight as to whether a zero fare option could be funded, perhaps outside of the city necessarily covering the entire cost from the general fund as is proposed for the half fare option. So just wanted to put that out there for folks. I really would appreciate its strong consideration because I think that we need to make sure that the intent of our work focusing on folks' income level is reaching as many people as possible. So thank you.
Councilmember Greggert offers the motion to amend. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Councilmember Emanuel. Further discussion? Councilmember Emanuel?
Thank you, Madam President. I have a question and then I have some a comment if I can ask the mover a question. Is your intention that this would cover any child or any student between K and 12, including public, private, and homeschool?
Yeah, the intention would be essentially anyone who's, you know, I know that the way that it works right now is that, you know, there's an ID that is shown or to bus drivers to be able to get the lower fare for K through 12 students already. And I'm not aware that every single, like, obviously, a homeschool child may not have an ID. So I think the intent is really to make sure we're reaching at least everybody who is 18 and under because I believe that the folk like children who are younger than K through 12 have access to the bus system at zero fare already.
Thank you. And may I say a statement now? Thank you. So I am in support of this. The main reason is thinking about kids who may not have a healthy relationship with the people that they live with or perhaps that they don't live with. In Eau Claire alone, the public schools, my understanding is that one of the largest homeless populations is when a child will tell their parent if they are gay or lesbian or bisexual, et cetera, that a lot of times parents will kick them out of the home. And so that would not be a situation where they could use their parents' income level to say that they could use public transportation. So I think that what this does is it really helps make that public transportation accessible to every person between kindergarten and 12th grade and really removes any barrier to participation due to any unstable or unhealthy dynamics going in their home.
Further discussion on the motion to amend? Councilmember Strobel?
Thank you. I don't think I'll be able to support this. And if I may, well, I'm not seeing anything about any income-based fares on here. So unless I'm reading this incorrectly, it could just mean any students, all students, K through 12. And I mean, to me, that seems like it will really affect our revenues. And I don't know that that's necessarily the intent of what we're doing here tonight. And it seems like there's going to be a fairly substantial plan coming forward. And so I think for me, this complicates it a bit. So I think I will not support it.
Councilmember Weld?
Thank you, Council President. I guess I'm not in support of the change. And not that I'm not opposed to at least some discussion further as we discussed earlier about possibly this is during our budget sessions, that we look at this as another item that we can address. But I think it takes away from the spirit of what we've spent the last six months working on. And that was focused on families with low income and people with low income. And that encompasses, you know, obviously, the majority of the children that are part of those families. But it wasn't meant to cover, you know, children, you know, up to the age of 12th grade that can afford or have the ability to afford the fare that a student would pay or be expected to pay. And to try and to separate that and to now go into including all children, I think just creates a more difficult situation when we do try and find the funds to not only now find for low-income, excuse me, families or people of low income. And then along with that, funding for all children really makes it a whole different proposal and resolution and effort that the city will have to take on and us as a council. I'd like to see us focus on what has been before us, like I said, since November. And then anything beyond that, Councilmember Greggert, I welcome to make a proposal in the future that the council can or that the staff can come back and address with us at that time.
Councilmember Worthman?
Thank you, Council President. I will be supporting this amendment. I just looked online here and found that in our community, we have 369 students who are homeless. And without a doubt, there many of them probably have impediments to riding the bus. I think the spirit of this is to say, how do we look forward at potential public-private partnerships to make up this cost? Is this a priority that we hope is looked at over the next eight months? You know, I think what we're setting here is not a final solution to how we're going to do this, but the fact that our council cares about this issue and cares about making sure that K through 12 ridership doesn't continue to decline at the numbers that it is right now. So I think that's what this the idea here is, is to send a signal about our priorities. And hopefully, the nuts and bolts of how we'll do it will come forward at the end of the year.
And there being no further discussion on, oh, Councilmember Weld?
Thank you. Just a follow-up. I appreciate the comment in regards to the number of homeless children. And I have to believe that our social services and the groups that are affiliated throughout the city are watching out for them already. And are certainly going to make every effort to get them the needs that they require in regards to transportation. And I think as a community, you know, the City of Eau Claire, the staff, and our council members, we obviously all care and want the best for them. But again, I still feel this comes back to a separate action and apart from what we're doing here today. And it can be discussed again in the future.
Councilmember Greggert?
Thank you, Council President. I, yeah, I certainly appreciate the fact that this is adding extra work onto our staff. And I do think, you know, I was not able to participate necessarily in the earlier work of the committee or of the council, obviously, as a new council member. But I do feel compelled to put this forward because I, you know, I want to make sure that we're as comprehensive as possible. And there was, you know, there were some comments last night from the public about adding efficiencies. And I think, you know, for a family to walk on the bus with three or four kids and paying for all the riders, you know, some of this can, you know, add some time that the bus is waiting and, you know, trying to, you know, trying to find ways to just really increase the accessibility of our bus system, I think can add a lot of efficiencies. And if we don't have to sell certain types of passes or we don't have and we're starting to go in the direction of zero fare, that can really add a lot of efficiencies to a transit system. That was a concern expressed last night is that we're, you know, we're spending time and effort on, while this entire structure within this resolution is, you know, adds a lot of, it does add some administrative work to try to prove someone's income level, for example. And I think this simplifies it, at least for a cross-section of our of our community. And I will emphasize again that this really is about exploring it, exploring the idea and working with maybe some folks that weren't included originally on the Transit Fair Committee. And I certainly would be willing myself to do outreach without making sure I don't step on the toes of the city manager, obviously. But I think it's a reasonable thing to do to really look at what a zero fare option for at least one group of our of our city would look like and have some time to do it and report back in August and with time for us to see if it fits into our budget. And maybe some of that cost is coming from, you know, a school district that wants to support it. I also do, if I can, ask a question as to what the city finance director, Mr. Winsenz, would believe to be the cost of replacing the revenue from K through 12 students. Thank you.
Certainly, as a matter of discussing the motion to amend, one could inquire if there's a thought from Mr. Winsenz, maybe not on that specific question, but general.
Yeah, thank you, Council President. Kincaid, Councilmember Greggert. We budget about $44,000 a year in revenue from student passes as well as the student one-time trips. The piece of this that I think has to be much better flushed out is what impact, if any, it may have on the cost side of the equation. Because while increasing ridership is a very good thing to do within the transit system, it also may increase the frequency of trips, require additional bus trips, require additional buses, so might require additional routes within the transit system. And all of those things then start driving the cost side of the equation. The other thing that Mr. Greggert and I spoke about on the phone today was the relationship with the school district and the relationship with student transit and whether if we started offering free transit rides, does that then become the de facto student transportation system within the community? And then how do those relationships all work? So those are all things that would have to be flushed out as part of this, part of the discussion with community partners, the school district, and others within the community about how that all works, what are the mechanics logistically, and what are the funding mechanisms to do that?
Thank you, Mr. Winsenz. Further, Councilmember Emanuel?
Thank you, Madam President. If I would be allowed, I might have a related follow-up question for our finance director. This is in regards to summer rides for kids who are going to the pool. I believe that they can ride the bus for free on Tuesdays and Thursdays to go to Fairfax Pool. Do you know if that was a change in revenue and what is a financial impact? And do we think it's a worthwhile program to give kids free rides on Tuesdays and Thursdays? And I think also to the library sometimes.
Yeah. Excuse me, while I, I don't have any information concerning, well, because of the pool program, we haven't seen any impact on ridership yet this year because that program that program hasn't started. But you're absolutely correct. We do have a program where there's a reduced fare for students going, or not, yeah, children going to Fairfax Pool, as well as the library pass. We did, the library pass is good on Tuesdays and Thursdays after school is dismissed. And there's no charge for that particular program. It's actually an in-kind service that we have with the library. And we also do have the Fairfax program. You know, those are, you know, both programs that are designed to get kids, students, to other city facilities, you know, specifically the library, as well as Fairfax Pool. And, you know, I think from the standpoint of allowing children to utilize Fairfax Pool and, you know, their paying admission to get into that city facility, I think it is a worthwhile program.
Thank you again. Councilmember Christopherson?
I want to just weigh in on this conversation because it seems to me that we've moved in our work from just looking at a funding issue to balancing our funding versus our service level. I really support the spirit of this amendment in that it expands our thoughts of who is, who's the using audience, who is it that this service is addressing, and how effective is our service. However, for whatever reason, I just don't feel prepared to support this in relationship to this resolution in front of us today. Because I think at this point in time, that we are looking at affordability. How do we support transit? How do we begin to see that balance between how much revenue it generates for the service that we offer? And last night, in our public meeting, I was made aware that we're going to begin a five-year plan of really looking at, is this working? How can we be more effective in using the public funds? And I think that's the discussion where I would really dig into this. So as much as I appreciate your bringing this forward, I would not support the amendment.
Okay. There being no further discussion on the motion to amend, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Jean?
No.
Bergy?
Aye.
Christopherson?
No.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Greggert?
Aye.
Kincaid?
No.
Strobel?
No.
Weld?
No.
Worthman?
Aye.
And that motion fails on a five to four vote. We're back to the substitute resolution as unamended. Any further discussion? And there being none, clerks, please call, oh, Councilmember Strobel?
So this is the resolution that has brought before council right now? Correct. If I was going to support, if I was going to support any of the suggestions, I think the staff suggestion, the one before us, is the appropriate one, given everything that's going on. I supported the fee increase. It was the first fee increase we had for like nine years, so I did support that the last time through. I didn't think 25 cents was unreasonable. It barely is more than the inflationary factor we've had in the last nine years. I don't think we saw any citizens come to speak last night, really, to ask us to roll it back. We asked the question, riders have not registered complaints. So yeah, ridership's down 5%, but it's really statistically insignificant, and in fact, might not have anything to do with the rates, as it apparently is happening statewide. I also don't think any other cities offer, certainly any other cities our size don't offer this, and the only other city in the whole state of Wisconsin that offers it is Madison. I think the transit division needs the funds. And I really think that council's trying to fix something that's not broken. And so I don't think I'll support it.
Councilmember Emanuel?
Thank you, Madam President. I will be supporting this resolution this evening with a little bit of hesitation. I feel that this is inching us back to where we were, I think a phrase has been used tonight, of rolling back the funds. And myself and Councilmember Worthman and Councilmember Beaton were the three, I believe the three lone people who supported the budget amendment to keep the fare increase, specifically, at least for myself, so that it would not disproportionately affect people who are experiencing low income. And so I will certainly support it because I think we do need to move forward, even if it's a little bit. However, I don't think it's enough, and I'm concerned that increased barriers for people to apply for some type of reduced fare is really difficult. There is a lot of privilege involved with being able to provide documentation and go to different buildings. And it's also, there's a lot of societal barriers, you know? There's a lot of stigma that's involved with this. And I think the more that our community can do to reduce the stigma to, for anybody who's experiencing low income, I think is good. So that's a challenge for myself to really be thinking about, of how do we reduce the barriers for people to participate? And I also think that, with that, I know that comes at a cost. And so I would be very interested in having an analysis of underspent funds, you know, historically underspent funds, so that we're not potentially funding something with monies that once in a while are underspent, but really just if there's any consistent pattern or trends that could help make a more informed decision. And the last I would say is that I really appreciate what Councilmember Christopherson asked last night. I thought, okay, if I was on a news commentary show, I'd be saying, oh, Councilmember Christopherson asked the question of the night. And that was about, this conversation really could benefit from talking about how do we increase the riders versus how do we increase the money? And that's where I think we ought to be. That's our big picture of where we go. So I really appreciate that. I wanted to publicly let you know that. And we have a lot of opportunities in front of us.
Counselmember Greggert?
Thank you, Council President. Did want to, I guess, express some of that concern as well from a previous council member, where, you know, there are a lot of barriers here that we're talking about. And hopefully, you know, we can figure out a solution. I realize this resolution doesn't necessarily go into specifically how we will determine a person has reached the threshold to receive the fare. So we can figure some of that out later. But I do think I support the idea of moving toward this graduated approach. And we really look at that half-fair option for our 2019 budget. I did want to respond to the inflation-adjusted concept where we, the council members received an email comparing the year 2009 to an inflation-adjusted 2018 next to the actual fares for 2018. And that was the year after we had just increased bus fare. So 2009 was the year we had increased bus fares by 50% for the cash fare, if you combine with 2008 as well, which was also a year we increased bus fares. So if we actually look at 2007, it was a dollar to ride the bus for the full cash fare. And if you were to adjust that for inflation in the year 2018, it would be a dollar 23. For the monthly pass, it was $34 in 2007. And inflation-adjusted, it would be $41.30. And meanwhile, our actual rate for that is $50. So we have a situation where, depending on what year you choose, before or after major increases occurred in 2008 and 2009, our bus fares have actually gone up quite a bit faster than inflation. So that's a concern of mine and one of the reasons why I oppose the fare increase in the first place as a citizen. But one other just broad point that I want to make is that we should all think about what percentage of our ridership is really enough for us to cross the line of just being, just considering, like, having a zero fare transit system for all riders? Because if it was 90% of our riders were fit the qualifications of, on the income scale, is that enough for us to decide to actually make our transit system a zero fare system for everyone? Right now, it's sitting at about 66% at two-thirds, according to the study that was done in January. And I would really encourage more study to be done because that was done in haste in preparation for this report. And I think our transit development plan could really flesh out at the income level of our riders, so.
And there being no further discussion, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Bergy?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Greggert?
Aye.
Kincaid?
Aye.
Strobel?
No.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
And that resolution passes. The final resolution on our business agenda is one authorizing the city manager to enter into a lease agreement with 2020 Tambo for temporary relocation of City Hall to 2020 Prairie Lane during renovations. Just as a matter of process, this motion, this resolution was postponed from our meeting two weeks ago. It is moved, it is, it is moved by, excuse me, it was moved and amended at that meeting on a motion by Councilmember Bergy, seconded by Councilmember Christopherson, and amended pertaining to council meeting location. So we're taking up a discussion on a resolution moved and amended with a lot more information, as I understand it. Thank you for all that work, double time.
Certainly. I'll just touch over what I included in the council packet after the postponement two weeks ago. We explored possible venues for city council meetings, possible meeting, possible venues for City Hall. Staff have revisited all three of these categories, possible corridors for City Hall staff, and then also further operations of a downtown service center, regardless of where council meetings and staff is located during the renovation project. So quickly, with city council meetings and understanding that the proposal was amended, or the resolution was amended two weeks ago, we did revisit those. We did confirm that the current county boardroom is available for city council meetings, with the one condition that on Tuesdays, city council meetings would have to conclude by 6:30. There is a previously scheduled 7 o'clock meeting for the county for their zoning and planning on Tuesday nights. Mondays, there are no conflicts, and if plan commission is desired to be held there, there is no conflicts on Monday nights opposite of the council meetings. The former county boardroom was not available. And the other venues that you see on the sheet, there was one at the Christ Church Cathedral that did have a cost, and it did have some scheduling concerns with a possible divider in the room that would potentially expose council meetings to having other meetings in a room on the other side of a divider in there. So realistically, for city council meetings outside of space that's contained in the 3M building that the proposed lease is for, the most viable option is for, at the county boardroom in the downtown location. The 3M does adequately house room for council and boards and commission spaces out there. The next, is there any questions on city council meetings, our research, before I continue? I'll answer, feel free to, I'll be happy to answer questions at the end as well. We did revisit, there's 12 venues for City Hall staff in your packet, and we did revisit those for availability to house all of City Hall staff. If it did have the ability to house city council meetings, the cost functionality. And the three options that were our top options were, and this discounted the Whitley option that was in the first go-around when we started looking at these sites back in November, because it didn't fit with our needs that we had currently. But the lease on 2020 Prairie Lane still remains, nothing was changed from that. The former jail quarters in the county courthouse, we did visit with the county. There was a desire to see if we spent money as a city and the county wanted to chip in and finish the financial commitment to restore that, those vacant areas to a point that they would be office space. The future city, the future county plans for one-half of that would end up requiring the improvements that the city made for the city offices to be redone. So it wouldn't be just a 100% cost savings, there would be some rework in there. So, and there was some additional costs for utilities and cleaning that wasn't included on the county side, as well as some operational concerns that, and difficulties that we had discussed with the county. So that was the second option. And the third, that we hadn't anticipated as being a viable option, but was brought to our attention due to a recent vacancy, was the Scobie Building, the second one down on the list. It's a smaller building, it's about 13, a little over, a little under 14,000 square feet. We explored it, it's vacant. And after going through the floor plans and examining the functionality with the office space and the cubicle space, it initially seemed like it would be, it would be a viable alternative. We have 91 staff that are looking to move, and we can find space for about 82 in that building. So we're, functionally, it wouldn't work as well as being on the 3M building as proposed. It is a little bit closer to downtown, it's on a transit route. But functionality for the city staff, for our operations, and for being able to hold boards and commission meetings, we did, I did visit with our board staff members from City Hall about the relocation of board meetings, as well as the council meeting being relocated as well. A number of those are being looked at, being relocated, like Waterways and Parks is being considered to be moved to Hobbs. I believe our transit commission meeting is looking at having corridors in downtown, possibly at the library. So our various boards and commissions that we have, they're looking for alternate meeting places, but if they're not able to reach a place that would be agreeable, the 3M building would be able to provide that. The Scobie Building is limited in office space to be able to provide space for those with a larger attendance. It is slightly less costly for the total lease terms and utilities, but it is about a third smaller than the 3M space. And when you, when we weighed, or when I weighed the functionality, it was, I'm still confident in what my council packet had at the time as a recommendation to go out to the Prairie Lane site. We got our last piece of data with some of these sites this afternoon. And so I do recommend, as the recommended lease site, the Prairie Lane. And then the last, if anybody has questions about the staff, and I'll go over the service center.
Councilmember Strobl?
So the two buildings that you were just most currently looking at, we have total costs on those. Is the 3M, I don't know if that's accurate, what you have in there, 250 plus utilities? And then Scobie Building?
Yeah, with some of our numbers that we got in, the total cost, including rent, utilities, and then to get it, to get the office space wired- rent, utilities, and then to get it, to get the office space wired for our city fiber optics and information technology and data, the Scobie Building is about $270,000, and the 3M Building is estimated about $303,000 on there. The, the 3M Building is, is again larger. The Scobie Building, for the functionality for it, to get the additional space that we have that's not included in the cost, there are some storage areas and some boiler rooms that we would put, have to put offices in, or we would have to harvest conference rooms that would affect the functionality to get us to the space that we have. It's significantly lower, the Scobie Building rent was lower than the 3M, but the cost to bring it up to data standards with the wiring and the, and the fiber optic are what made them closer in cost, and so it was a little bit less, right around a 10% difference in cost, overall cost.
And what was the travel time on both those?
The, the Scobie Building is about four to five minutes to downtown on Galloway Street. Three, the 3M Building, I believe from my presentation last week was about nine minutes on MapQuest, as spelled out. So the, the Scobie Building is, it's located off of, for people not aware, it's located off of Birch Street on the city's east side. As you approach Birch Street on Galloway Street, you cross, instead of taking a right to head east towards the 53 freeway, you cross on Birch Street, and it's north of Birch Street on the city's eastern limits over there. So it's a, a trip up Galloway Street from downtown to reach the Scobie Building. But we, we looked at it, I mean, we, we had multiple city staffs and managers go out and look through it, and it, it looked like it was, it was going to be a strong candidate, but when it gets down to fitting all the people in and being functional, it didn't offer the functionality that 3M had with that.
Councilmember Weld.
Thank you, council president. Thank you, Mr. Solberg. The, there was some value to 3M due to the fact that it was furnished too, is that right? Was the Scobie burn, Scobie Building furnished?
It was furnished as well.
They're both furnished? Okay. All right. Thank you.
Councilmember Jean.
Thank you. Just to clarify, so right now, the format we have is that the best, better for the meeting, is that what you're saying?
It offers, in, after we looked at the alternatives, I feel it offers the best functionality for staff. It has the best ability to accommodate boards and commission meetings if need be, if something were to happen at the, at the courthouse and council meetings were not able to be held there, it would have space to accommodate all of the public meetings that the city has. We would have to supplement, as mentioned in the presentation two weeks ago, for public meetings, we'd have to work with our transit partners to provide transit service before and after public meetings out there. But the 3M Building is a larger, more functional space for conducting business operations for the staff.
Thank you.
Any questions? Councilmember Worthman.
Thank you, council president. Mr. Strobel, did we hear back from the council about, sorry, Mr. Solberg, did we hear back from the county board, the administrator about whether there could be a cost savings, cost sharing, if we were to develop out that?
Yes, we did, we did meet with the county executive and other members from the county and talked about building out both spaces and what the buildout would need to be to serve city functioning with our offices and our cubicle space versus what the county had planned for those areas. And the county's future use for those areas aren't exactly the same as what it would be for the city to use it. They have plans for a larger conference space and having different departments out there. We were looking at having smaller offices and cubicle space, so some of those offices would have to come out when they renovated into what their future use is for that. So it's, it wasn't as straightforward as just we move out and it's set to go for them as we had thought going into it. The uses weren't 100% compatible. There would be some reuse for it, but it wouldn't be, there would still be some rework of taking out part of what we would put in, and then them restoring it for their needs in the future.
Okay. Don't see any further questions. Oh, councilmember Strobel?
Yes, none of the staff, but, I mean, how, I think we had a little bit the last time of the, the functionality of the county boardroom and how that would, would work for city council. Have we gotten into that yet, or am I out of bounds on that question?
No, but the, the resolution has already amended that we're moving to the county boardroom, the county, city council meetings. But you can, we can talk about what we think about that, but that motion has been passed.
And, okay, so it, it has a, could it, could it be motioned again?
One can always amend a motion. We can amend it.
Okay. I'm just asking the question.
Yeah. Councilmember Weld.
Thank you, council president. In regards to the Tuesday night concern time wise at the county board, obviously, we have to be out at 6:30 no matter what. Is that the understanding?
Yeah, they have a regularly scheduled meeting on, it begins at seven. If that meeting were canceled and we received notice, that restriction wouldn't apply, but if we move there, that would be an understanding that we would need to cut short those Tuesday meetings that would overlap with theirs in time to allow the, our patrons to exit and their, their stakeholders to enter.
Can I ask a follow, how do we cut short a legislative meeting when we're in the midst of it? How do we, where do we go? What do we do? We're broadcasting it? I mean, where, how do we do that?
Mr. Nick.
Yeah, thank you. If I could, you know, I guess two ways. One, you'd, you'd know that going in if, if that's, you know, if that's the decision that, that's where council is going to meet on a temporary basis, so that, that's a known restriction. And then functionally, the way you handle it if things just run longer than you expect is you would, you would recess, or you would adjourn without a completion of your agenda. You know, that's atypical. Typically, we work through everything, but if, if you have those sort of deadlines, and sometimes meeting, you know, boards do, those items would simply not be acted upon and would have to come back either at the next meeting, or there are code means to hold extraordinary sessions if you absolutely need to, to pass something. But, you know, that, that's how you do it if you had to, otherwise, probably in the meeting, you have to kind of keep an eye on the clock and try to plan accordingly.
Thank you.
Councilmember Emanuel.
Thank you, Madam President. If I can add on two things to kind of the functionality of that, is it possible for us to find an alternate location at the county board, like the former boardroom or another large conference room, and put on the bottom of our agenda, in the event that this meeting goes beyond 6:30, the city council may recess and resume, I guess, their meeting in such and such room, so that we could cover our tail? So that would be one. And the other is, is it possible if we know on our agenda, okay, we may not finish by 6:30 and we have some really important things to get to, could we rearrange, could the body rearrange the agenda to make sure, okay, these time sensitive things we are going to vote on, and if it's a little less time sensitive, maybe we let that fall in the rare event we even go after 6:30?
Mr. Nick.
Certainly. First, on the, could we move somewhere else? I think if you can move to that previous matrix. So the other rooms aren't available. The, the former county boardroom was considered, but it's, it's not available to us. So there, there aren't other spaces within the county, as I understand it, to simply move to. To your second point, yeah, that, that would be something you could do, you always have the ability, that's a motion to table. You could table items in the earlier business agenda that maybe aren't as, as critical if you start running into that issue or perceive that issue, and, you know, try to get to, for example, ordinances for action that are already noticed, things like your zoning ordinances where you may have, you know, had a hearing the night before and there's an action expected or things like that, but you can shift that agenda around as you need to during your meeting.
And any other questions? Councilmember Greggert.
Thank you, council president. Thank you again, Mr. Solberg, for your work. I had a question about the nature of the county meeting that occurs. Is it a, is it a committee meeting versus a full board meeting? And then also, and maybe this is for other staff, would it make, I guess, maybe it's the, maybe the meeting would be short enough that it would make sense for us to recess and then come back into the room and complete our meeting, and maybe we have to recess for an hour and a half or something, but, yeah, that's, those are basically my things to consider and questions.
It's, it's my understanding that it's the county's version of our plan commission. So there, I mean, with their development issues and their rezoning, our plan commission meetings sometimes are short, sometimes are rather long, so I don't, I don't know that we would be able to say that it's a, you know, a predictable half an hour to an hour meeting. So that might not be an option, probably not the best option to, to plan on coming back after that.
Mr. Nick.
Right, I agree with those sort of issues and also the very real open meeting issues. I mean, you talk about accessibility and the public's ability to participate in, in your important actions, I, I would raise grave concerns about that sort of an idea.
Okay. We might have more questions as we discuss, but I think we're.
Sure. And then I guess one last thing for the downtown service center. We are still exploring options, both with the county, for a service center to have a marginal presence in downtown. And as we have more details, we'll make the council aware of that, exactly how it's staffed and where it will be, but we do seek to provide the, the best service that we can with the, you know, a minimal amount of service staff members in downtown at a location that's commensurate with the service that we give now, you know, or in the spirit of.
And I think councilmember Emanuel has that question.
Thank you, Madam President. I might need to retract a little bit of my former statement of, or my previous statement on the former county boardroom. I guess the spirit of what I was getting at is, is it possible for the city to work with the county to identify another meeting space, even if it's not the former county boardroom? And I am not asking for a direct answer right now, it's a little bit of a question that could just be answered later, so I'm going to call on the city county health director. Not asking you to come up and ask something, but I recall a meeting in a boardroom kind of near those offices and that, maybe there's just an alternate, large-ish meeting space that could be held for a reserve. So it's not really an answer that I need, I, I just think it is possible that we could look to recess to another room, and I would just encourage, if this all gets passed tonight, just the city to look for contingency plans and that we work on that in the event we think it's going to be a longer meeting. And most of the time, it's not, so it'll be a non-issue most nights.
Okay. And nice, councilmember Bergy.
Thank you. I just want, with the downtown service center, will that, I don't know, can you guarantee that would be, would voting be part of that? I just think that's really important.
Elections are planning, as part of the renovations, permanent quarters for elections will be in the fire station across the alley behind, so they will be there permanently in their permanent home while the renovations are going on. What we're looking at is having a presence, working with housing. If we have a presence for housing in downtown, there you have a, a number of customers that come in. Customer service for paying bills and so forth, is it just a drop box and we push automation, or do we have one person taking those? In engineering, we have parking, parking renewals that students give. So what the makeup is of that, if we have three people or five people we haven't worked through yet, but elections is intended to remain downtown. That's one of the important ones, and housing is probably about the second most important, I would say.
Thank you for keeping that in mind.
Thank you, Mr. Solberg. So the resolution lies before us, as moved by councilmember Bergy, seconded by councilmember Kristofferson, and, and as amended, and now discussion is in order. Councilmember Strobel?
It concerns me on the county boardroom for that Tuesday thing. I don't know how many meetings we have a year 26, and probably, I would imagine, at least 10 of them go past 6:30. I mean, we've been here much longer, it seems like, a lot of times. So we table it, and then we bring it back the following Tuesday, and I, I don't know, I don't know how timely some of those issues are, and, I mean, I don't know that I necessarily want to have another meeting on Wednesday to finish our job on Tuesday, so that concerns me a little bit, and I certainly don't want to wait an hour and a half for their plan commission to get done and come back. I, I guess that's, that's a little bit of the concern I have, and I, I don't know, I would, I would like the meetings to be downtown as well, but given, given the situation here, I, I wonder if others wouldn't consider going back to the original plan of, of having the, the meetings right at the 3M building where we don't have those constraints, and I guess I'm waiting for other fellow council members to weigh in.
Councilmember Worth.
Thank you, council president. Well, and for new council members who maybe don't know, we often will have our legislative sessions here, but then we will move into the North Conference Room, where we may do budget discussions or, you know, do a public hearing, or, sorry, a public presentation or something of that sort. So in those, in that case, we publicly notice, I assume we do both this one and the North Conference Room, and my thought is that an easy solution would be, is there a room in the county board that's the size of the North Conference Room, or maybe even bigger, that we could actually utilize in the case if it runs over? We've, we moved before, so it's not like we can't somehow figure out a way to do that.
Further discussion? Councilmember Weld.
Thank you, council president. And just a clarification on councilmember Worthman's remark or comment. When we do go to the North Conference Room, though we are adjourning the legislative portion of the meeting, it's not continuing, we're not, we're not continuing to do our work there in this regard, and I, so I don't know if that's possible for us to move, and, and again, I'm not trying to fight the, the idea of, of the county boardroom, I, I'm still not in favor of the county boardroom, only because of the setup and the face-to-face interaction and, and the idea of us communicating and, and working together as a, as a, as a public hearing. But at the same time, I, I have concerns in regards to the Tuesday night and whether or not that we can get it done in time by 6:30. So I guess I, I would support going back to the 3M Building if, if possible.
Councilmember Greggert.
Thank you, council president. I, I think I, you know, I, I haven't been to enough meetings to know exactly how we can shuffle things around, but I really appreciate the proclamations that we have at our meetings, and I'm wondering if those could be moved to Monday in order to, you know, today that would have saved 20, 25 minutes, and that's not something we vouch upon, is my understanding, is a proclamation is, is somewhat of a acclamation type of, of activity that we do, which is, I think is really important that we do and we give that time, but, and maybe it could be done on Monday, so that's a thought.
Any further discussion? Councilmember Emanuel.
Thank you, Madam President. I was waiting for a possible motion, but are you going to make a motion? Because I kind of have some final thoughts, but I can wait till, if anything else is going to happen.
I guess I'm not sure how we would word it in regards to the amendment that's already in place, but because of the most recent discovery in regards to the, the conflict with the Tuesday nights, I would move to eliminate the, the amendments, I'm not sure how that, that is to be presented, that, that was agreed upon two weeks ago, and revert back to the original recommendation by staff in the 3M Building for the council meetings and, and City Hall Building.
Councilmember Weld has offered a motion to, I guess we're amending the resolution, not the amendment. Right, then we'd have, so last amendment takes precedence. Right.
Yeah. You are asking me, right? Yeah, you, the amendments are to the resolution, and I think in. And I think an important distinction, because I would not recommend to this body that it simply reversed previous decisions. So, that concept that we've talked about before about, you know, is there something new? Is there some sort of substantial change? So, it was given voice, but I think it is important to reference that. And I would encourage you, you know, you all get to decide how you vote based on how you all decide to vote in the public's best interest. But my recommendation to you is you only do that sort of thing if there's something new. So, the mover is indicating that something new is that there's a 6:30 restriction. And the amendment is to the main motion to remove the clause that council meetings be held at the county board.
May I ask a point of inquiry?
Yes.
I believe I recall that that information was present two weeks ago about the potential conflict. Maybe I'm wrong, but maybe you remember, or Mr. Solberg? I think you had said that that was the case.
We didn't have it confirmed at that point, but there was, there was, there was discussion of that on one of the nights that there was that meeting, but I didn't, we didn't have it. It started at seven, or six, or five, what time it was. So, we did have time to confirm that and what nature of that meeting was and whether that meeting was able to be rescheduled, if it was like a commission meeting or not, a board meeting or a committee meeting as opposed to a full commission meeting with that.
Thanks.
Councilmember Weld's motion seeks a second.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Councilmember Strobel. Discussion, then, is in order on this motion to amend with the caveat from our district, from our city attorney, which it's rare that we reverse a decision we made as a body not that long ago. He is right. That's a rare thing, and we do it respectfully and in light of new information. Thank you for reminding us about that. Councilmember Strobel?
Yeah. And I guess, I would think the body would have the ability to do that, given that we gave direction to staff to come up, to look at it harder. Their first recommendation was not the county boardroom. That was, that was, council wanted them to look at that. Then we also asked them to look at other sites down here and come back with new information. I think there's enough new information that if council wanted to decide to go back to the original proposal, I think that's reasonable.
Councilmember Emanuel.
Thank you, Madam President. I remember talking with staff last week. It might not have been here at the meeting, but certainly there was knowledge that this meeting did occur in this room. And in fact, I was able to research it last week, and all of these meetings are listed on the county's website. And so, this is not necessarily new. This is a standing committee and standing location that they meet. And so, I don't feel that this meets the criteria of new information necessarily. And I also am concerned that, well, maybe I'll just ask a follow-up question. For amendments, since we don't have a full body, what types, what satisfies an amendment passing? How many votes?
First, to answer that question, it's a majority of those voting on a parliamentary matter. So, you have nine present, that's a vote of five. To pass the resolution itself is a statutory matter. That's a final action by this governing body, and it needs six. Just, so that's the answer to your question. To clarify my previous point on new information, I'm not giving you legal advice that that's necessary, but I am sharing with you my advice in council that that's what I suggest. I think it's the best practice that councils, or any board, don't get in the habit of just ping-ponging actions back and forth. But it's not a legal impossibility. As I indicated, your votes are your own. And this matter hasn't passed yet. It's still in front of you for amendment. But that was my advice in council to you, is to be cautious of when you do that.
Councilmember Weld.
Council President, the, I lost my thought.
Further discussion, then, on the motion, the second motion, or this motion to amend? Was your point on this action?
Pardon?
Was your point on this action, and so, but it hasn't come to you? Okay. Councilmember Emanuel.
Thank you, Madam President. There's no way I'll be supporting this. I think the body spoke very clearly last time that majority of people wanted to have it downtown. And I'll speak for myself, fundamentally, this decision is getting at, can the public readily access their city council meetings? When you're talking about a location, an alternate location, perhaps nine minutes away from the city center that's not even serviced by the transit, public transportation, fundamentally, that makes this governmental body less accessible to the public. And for me, that's what's driving my decision, that more than anything, to have that accessibility to the public is really important. We need to be held accountable. And citizens need to be able to come and share what their thoughts are. So, I definitely, this location works for another local government body. There are different ways we can structure our meetings. We're a creative bunch, so we can do that. And there, I'm certain, there are other rooms that we could recess into, and our job would just be to publicly notice ahead of time. So, I definitely won't support this.
Councilmember Weld.
I guess I was just going to make a comment in regards to the new information. I think as a body, as a council, two weeks ago, when we, when we were presented the staff report, that wasn't part of it, the staff report, nor was it discussed from staff to us. So, we made a decision, or we voted on not having all the information. I appreciate the comment in regards to that it is out there, it's on a website, and the meetings are announced and scheduled. But that wasn't available to us when we actually had a chance to discuss and hear and vote. And so, I guess that's the concern that I have now, is that had we had that same information two weeks ago, would we have voted the same? I don't know that we would. And I, you know, again, just to comment, I'm comfortable with wherever the meeting is. To me, the formatative is more important than the location. Again, I mentioned that our last meeting, that, you know, we had a public hearing last night, to use as an example, and we had one, only one person that spoke. And he came from out on Runway Drive off the, you know, on the north side. And certainly, a more convenient location for him would have, he would have been able to get to the 3M building quicker than they would be to the courthouse. So, I mean, there's going to be pluses and minuses, no matter where we have it. The city's going to make an effort to provide a shuttle service to get people to wherever City Hall is and home. And I think that, you know, and to have the staff and have our council meetings in the same building is, I think, just as important. But to me, it's this face-to-face. That's what I want to continue with, and I think that at least allows us to do that.
If there being no further discussion, clerk, please call the roll on the motion to amend. Does anyone need restatement of the motion? Okay.
Can you clarify that again?
I didn't get it written down very well. Did you, Mr. Nick? Or Ms. Reeball? Go ahead.
My understanding is it was a motion to remove the directive that council meetings be held at the county boardroom at the Eau Claire County Courthouse. And then, so that's my understanding of it.
So, an "aye" vote puts council meetings back at the 3M building? Is that... Okay? Everyone's clear? Okay. Then, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Christopherson?
Aye.
Emanuel?
No.
Gregor?
No.
Kincaid?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Wirthman?
No.
Jeong?
Aye.
Bergy?
No. And that amendment passes five to four. So, now we're back to the resolution before you as amended. Further discussion? Councilmember Emanuel.
Thank you, Madam President. I have to say that I was prepared to support this amendment, or, excuse me, this resolution tonight, and support having a meeting at the 3M building. I can't because, now I can't because this assures that, in my opinion, there is inadequate space for the public to access their elected body. So, I can't support it tonight. I would have otherwise, without any amendments. I can't support it tonight. And if there's any way that this body can reverse their decision they just made, I would be glad to support this. But I just have to say, I can't support it tonight.
Further discussion? Councilmember Weld? Or Wirthman? Sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you, Council President. I think I have deep concern that council made a decision on a majority vote two weeks ago. I mean, I guess it's possible we could bring it back in two weeks. It'd probably be preferable not, but I'm a little, I think this is an unusual step to make for the council, to decide to reverse a prior council's decision. But, you know, I think one of the things that we really have to weigh up is the accessibility piece of this. And I understand, you know, arguments were made last week that this, holding council meetings at the 3M building is creating more accessibility for staff, and I understand that argument. I do think that there's a reason why governing bodies generally have their meeting places in the center of their city, and that's because it creates accessibility from all areas. And actually, last night, we had someone who was from the north side. It would have been very easy for them to get there. The other person who came to the meeting last night was on a bicycle, and she would have had to, you know, head five miles north. And so, while it does create different opportunities for people, let's all recognize that a meeting in the center of our city is probably easiest for most people to get to. I also am concerned deeply about the transportation issues. You know, we're trying to make it more easy for folks in our downtown, potentially students. We have, you know, big issues coming up that students are going to want to be a part of. Those are the kinds of things we ought to be thinking about as we're looking over this next year. And again, that really concerns me, that we may have a much greater distance for folks to travel. So, I'll leave it at that. I think I'm most deeply concerned about the fact that the city, that the city council tonight is sort of reversing a decision of two weeks ago.
Councilmember Bergy?
I also have a lot of concerns about the meetings being out the 3M, because it is not accessible on the transit. It's also not as cost-effective. It's free down here downtown. So, if we're voting for the public interest, I think both of those reasons are towards the public interest, that it's accessible for the public as well as cost-effective for citizens here in Eau Claire. And I'm willing, I would be willing to be flexible in making those two things happen, whether it be moving to a different room or whatnot.
So, the chair can see that we are in peril of not passing a resolution that our city really needs us to pass. We need to sign a lease and move on with moving our city services and providing the best service we can to our citizens and respecting the fact that staff need to work together and be together and feed off that energy and support each other. The chair, though, can see that the resolution as amended is in peril of not passing. And then, we have left our staff high and dry. And I, it's totally unprecedented, but the movers of the last motion may have to consider withdrawing that amendment if we're going to help our staff. That's what it's come to. No. No. Never question. Councilmember Strobel.
I heard concerns from fellow councilmembers. I didn't hear them say they wouldn't support the amended resolution, besides Councilmember Emanuel.
The chair, in her experience of sitting up here for too long, can see that the votes are likely not there. The only way to help our staff out tonight is to remove that last motion to amend and take it off the books. I think, I don't know what that, I don't even know if there's a parliamentary action for that, but we have to help our staff. We just have to. Mr. Nick?
I'll offer a couple suggestions. One, it's your most recent point. Motions to reconsider are in order. That is moved by someone who voted in the prevailing side. So, on that, on that amendment, it would be any of the five people voting in favor. So, that's one option. Another option is, should the resolution, I'm not saying it should, I'm just, you know, if in your wisdom, the resolution as it presently stands passes, and there is a majoritarian will of this council to meet somewhere other than... So, just remember where we were two meetings ago. There was no, the resolution was devoid of any indication of where a council meeting should be held. I was asked where a council meeting's going to be held, and they told you that by ordinance, by default, you meet wherever City Hall is. But you can change that by motion. So, the lease could be passed. That's what was brought in front of you, was a lease. You could, at some subsequent meeting, you know, direct where to hold your council meetings is somewhere else. So, that is an option, although as soon as I say it, I bring up the point that not only do we have to plan for moving staff on very short order, but we have to plan for where you all are going to meet. And whether that's at the county board meeting or at the 3M site, that involves some work for us, some infrastructure work. It also involves some planning for community TV, as would frankly relocating between meetings, you know, at a deadline. So, there's all those sort of issues where both would benefit from a prompt decision.
And a motion to reconsider as the prevailing side is that first option?
I would remove the motion.
You just make a motion to reconsider, which puts the amendment back on our table.
I'll make a motion to reconsider.
And is there a second? There is a second? Thank you. The motion to, the motion to amend, to move city, or whatever that was, remove the directive that council meetings are in the county boardroom is back before us. Any discussion? Councilmember Emanuel.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to say thank you very much for this opportunity, and I really appreciate the council president's comments that were made regarding, let's, well, I think the spirit was, let's try to do what we can to help move ahead. And that's what I see this as. So, maybe I could take some advice on, now, how do people vote on this? What is the question? And what does a yes and a no vote mean?
The motion to amend is right back before us, which the motion is to remove the directive that the council meetings meet in the county boardroom, exactly before us as, it's exactly before us. Councilmember Christopherson?
Madam President, thank you. I'm beginning to appreciate the conversations that we have when we're gathered together and how they go... and how, how they go from broad to specific. In, in this particular case, we're, we're really talking about a room and the room setup and the public's access, but as this, Mr. Attorney, Mr. Nick, has, has said, if we hadn't made it specific, we would have had all kinds of options. And it seems to me that we have technology, we could stream it to a million places, we could have facilitated conversations that would give us experience that we would never have if we didn't have this unique experience in front of us of going to a temporary site. So I'm, I'm all in favor of public access. I'm, I'm not sure that the board, the county boardroom is the only one or the best one. I certainly want to have this moved forward and I want us to have something that's going to work for the staff so that they feel supported and effective in, in supporting us in our work. So I'm, in the next few breaths, I'll figure out if I'm going to support or not, but I just think that supporting the public in their access to our decision could be done in a number of ways that aren't confined to a particular room.
Okay. There being no further discussion except for Councilmember Worthman?
I'd like the vote, or the motion to be clarified.
Would you mind reading the motion again?
Here's, here's what I understand with perhaps a little bit of literary parliamentary license. So I understand that we reconsidered, we moved for that. Usually you would vote on whether you even want to reconsider, but understanding the chair's direction, I think in essence, we've, unless you, you want to take a vote on that, but by sort of acclamation, we've decided that we are reconsidering. And so then what's back in front of us is the same motion that you just voted on that passed five-four. So it's, it's the same motion, you know, is, is back in front of you again, as if it didn't occur.
And the wording of that motion?
The wording of that was to remove the direction to hold council meetings at the county boardroom. In essence, taking that vote again.
Okay. Councilmember Strobel?
So I understand it's just sort of a do-over. We're just voting all over again on the, on the same one that just passed five-four. It's just a do-over. If you don't want that to pass, you just vote the other way. Is that correct?
I had to say it longer because I went to school for three years and I've been doing this for a while, but yeah, it's a do-over. Thank you.
All right. That clarifies it. This is one more conversation on that. I have a little heartburn about my, my second on that reconsideration, only the fact that I'm, I'm not sure that we know how the other two people that aren't here would vote if they were here. I think we're, maybe we're assuming how they would vote, but I also thought I heard that we could still pass this resolution and council could come back in two weeks and move council chambers, if, if that's still the way they wanted to do it. So I have a, I understand moving forward and I do appreciate that. I, I guess, I'm not sure how I'm going to vote on it.
The, the chair does recognize that it's, it's, it's not good precedent for us to be reversing ourselves if, as we've already discussed. It's also not good to presume what people would vote on who aren't here. And, and I appreciate that. The discussions change minds. We count on that in our legislative session. That's what we, we count on, changing each other's mind. However, at our last meeting, the two members who are not present did vote to hold council meetings in the county boardroom. And for me, the, the more important imperative for us is to help our city staff move along with this move. That's, takes precedence over where we meet. So I'm not sure all of that's parliamentary. I don't even know, but a sign of respect, I guess, anyway. Okay? On the motion to, oh, Councilmember Gregert?
Thank you, Council President. I, perhaps to clarify, you know, in terms of my, my position on this, two weeks ago was, you know, I did support the idea of, of us being in the, in the county board chamber for our meetings because of that accessibility and the reasons I stated before. And just, folks know, I have priorities toward people being able to walk and bike and take transit places. The, so I supported that, but then I also supported the idea of looking further into downtown and, but my focus was on the downtown, not necessarily being super flexible to have the, the county or having the city council meetings up at the, up at the former 3M building. So, so I think, you know, the fact that we looked at downtown and our staff did look thoroughly, like I really appreciate and we took that time and we had to delay our lease to do that and I, and that probably put some more pressure on it. I do believe we need to pass that lease tonight. And we did look at other locations downtown, but the fact is that we do have a location downtown that I think will work. And that's why I'll be voting no on this, on this motion here. Thank you.
Okay. There being no further discussion, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Emanuel?
No.
Gregert?
No.
Kincaid?
No.
Strobel?
No.
Weld?
No.
Worthman?
No.
Jean?
No.
Bergy?
No.
Christopherson?
No.
And we're back to the resolution as previously, as first time amended, directing the city council meetings to be held in the county boardroom. There being no further discussion, clerk, please call the roll.
We're, we're looking at the final amended resolution?
Final resolution as amended two weeks ago. Okay. Any questions?
Can you clarify that again? We can meet at?
The resolution would authorize a lease for the 2020 Prairie Lane and move council meetings to the county boardroom. That is what is before us.
Councilmember Gregert?
Aye.
Kincaid?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
And that resolution passes. That brings to an end our business agenda. We have one ordinance for action, an ordinance rezoning property located on the north and south sides of Normandale Drive. Questions from last evening? And on a motion by Councilmember Strobel, seconded by Councilmember Emanuel, item 22 is moved, discussion? And there being none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Kincaid?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
And that ordinance is adopted. There are two ordinances, two ordinances for introduction, an ordinance rezoning property located on the northwest corner of LaSalle Street and East Princeton from R1A to R1. And in ordinance, amending the city code of ordinances relating to restaurants, sidewalk cart, food vendors, and mobile food establishments operating in the city of Eau Claire. Does council wish to suspend the rules and take up either ordinance? Seeing no such desire, announcements are in order. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Madam President. Just start with a, a comment. We do appreciate that lease. There's a tremendous amount of work that has to happen going forward, so thank you for that. Reminder that on Friday is the League of Wisconsin Municipalities Government 101 program. If you haven't signed up for that, I think there's still some room for that. That is an all-day training opportunity for you. A reminder that, as mentioned earlier, the police officer memorial ceremony next Wednesday at 10 o'clock at the Florian Gardens. You don't need to sign up, but we certainly encourage your attendance if you can. And then a week from Friday, on the 18th, is the Eggs and Issues with our very own finance director, Mr. Winzenz, talking about TIFs and educational. So that should be informative and it'll, it'll be informative, so I encourage you to come to that as well. Let Kathy know if you'd like to go. That's all I have.
Any announcements? There being no, let's see, there being no further business come before this body and a motion by Councilmember Strobel, seconded by Councilmember Weld, we adjourn without objection.
This program was brought to you by a cooperation between Newsworks and the city of Eau Claire. A transcript of this meeting is available for the hearing impaired. It will be available within seven days of this telecast. Call 715-839-4912 or TDD 715-839-1689 or write Eau Claire City Clerk, PO Box 5148, Eau Claire, Wisconsin 54702-5148. Newsworks is made possible by continuing community support. If you would like to volunteer or make a donation, please contact us via phone at 715-839-5067 or online at valleymediaworks.org.